Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the December 8th Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting, and wish you all a happy holiday season. First of all, we're business if you have pagers or cellphones. Would you please silence those or turn them off at this time? If you are not the applicant and you are here to talk to us about a case today, there are sheets like this. They're available on the table outside the chambers. If you would complete the information and hand it to our secretary, we would be very happy to hear you. And with that, we'll go to approval of the minutes. Oh, Todd has something saying, okay. Well, we'll have to put that off and see if anyone else arrives. In that case, we're to continuance requests, Russell.
We have three uncontested requests for continuance. Item 30, which is SP 440, item 31, SPUD 623, and item 32, which is a subregulation, are all continued until January the 12th. Did anyone come here today to talk to us about items 30, 31, or 32 on our agenda?
Move the uncontested continuance.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the continuances. Cast your votes, and those are approved.
There are five new requests for continuance. Item 5, it's PC 10291, a request to continue indefinitely. Item 12, PC 10284, a request to withdraw. Item 16, PUD 1449, a request to continue until February the 23rd. Item 21, ABC 746, and item 29, SPUD 640, request to continue until January the 12th.
The same question as I asked before. Anyone here to talk to us about any of those items, 5, 12, 16, 21, or 29, on our agenda?
Move the additional continuance.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the additional continuances. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Are there any other continuance requests from the public today?
We have two items on the consent docket today. Item 1 is PUD SP-1369C, and item 2, CE 817.
Anyone come to talk to us about items 1 or 2 on our agenda today?
No approval of the items on the consent docket.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Item 3 is C 6317. It's a final plat of the edge at Midtown and Ward 6.
Mr. Chairman, Dennis Box here on behalf of the applicant. Kathy Bridges is here, Troy Lips is here, and Paul LaFever and I are here representing them. Adir is here on behalf of the city. We've been talking to him about some modifications that the public work staff would like, and we would, if you are so inclined, after I'm finished with the presentation, to approve this, on the southeast edge, there's a 50-foot area that from the south point, 50 feet up, we've agreed to move our lot line five feet to the west. And so if any motions are made, we would ask that you make it subject to that modification. We have had the opportunity to deal with a number of staff members on this project. We're excited about the project itself. The plat you see is just a block plat, but it is in an effort to get our site ready for development, and we're here to answer any questions if you have any.
Commissioners, we don't have anyone signed up. We do have a variance to TE 3, and we're talking about adding a TE 8, I guess, to address that southeast corner.
Yes, sir.
I just want to know if utilities, traffic management, and public works are all in agreement with what you just said.
Adir is here, and I'm going to let him respond.
Good afternoon. Adir, I agree with all that public works. Yes, we've worked with utilities and traffic in ourselves, the streets, to make sure that the easement requirements are met there at the southeast corner, where we had concern before.
Okay, we have a variance to TE number 3.
Move the variance.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the variance TE 3. Cast your votes, and that is approved.
The only thing I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, is when we look at item 4, we are proceeding to vacate the alley, which is the next item on your docket. We've got to close it, and then it'll end up going to the district court. So the only language that I would have a little concern about is that this says it must be approved by council prior to acceptance of the final plat. Well, in the processing, we will make sure that we go through the normal process you always do on closing and vacation actions, so.
And I have some additional TE languages apparently been prepared when we get to item 4. A motion on item 3?
Move approval of the application.
Please.
Yeah.
Adding the TE for the easement on the southeast corner at Walker and 12.
Right.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Item 3 is conditioned. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
And item 4 is CE 18819, which is an application by Oklahoma City Urban Renewal Authority to close various portions of streets and the alley associated with the edge.
Dennis Box and Paul LaFever here on behalf of the applicants. Mr. Chairman, I don't know if there's any questions or if you've coordinated with staff and...
I didn't have any questions in the... Excuse me. I didn't have any questions. And the proposed language for the TE is the existing sanitary sewer main must be abandoned, and water mains must be located to verify that sufficient right-of-way remains for maintenance, replacement, or installation of water main facilities.
And we're absolutely okay with that.
Okay. That will be TE 1, then.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, with the addition of TE 1, then the staff recommendation for continuance is negated.
Is moot.
Move approval of the application with the addition of TE 1.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 4 with the addition of TE 1. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Item 5 is being continued indefinitely. Item 6 is PUD 1443, which is an application by Legacy Bank to rezone 11500 North Kelly Avenue from I-1 to PUD 1443 and Ward 7.
Mr. Chairman, Dennis Box and David Box were here on behalf of the applicants. This is a project that we've been involved in for a little over a year. Ernie Ish is the engineer. We have gone through seven formal revisions, but at least 10 to 12 changes, significant changes have taken place since our first plan was put into place. The bank ended up taking this property back, and the first thing the bank did was get Ernie Ish involved to come up with a plan that would be in accordance with Oklahoma City's plan. We were then retained, and we have coordinated with your city planners and reviewed your plans to make sure that what our proposal was was in conformance with that. In addition, I want to thank Pat Garrett and the other neighbors that are in the area. We've had several meetings with them. They have made sure that we provided the adequate buffers and limitations to make this a quality development that would fit in with their area, which is a unique area. We're one mile from Broadway Extension. You've got the Hefner Parkway just to the north. You've got a golf course on the west side of Kelly, and so it's a unique area. When you go to the east of our site, then you get into more rural residential, and that's why in our plan, when you look at the eastern edge of our plan, you're going to find that we scale down the density and take it to that rural residential so we're in harmony with the uses that are to the east. The uses to the west is indicated. We've got a golf course, but also there's apartments that encapsulate the north area on the very northwest portion of our property line. So this is a plan that is, from a textbook standpoint, a model of mixed use. We have everything from single-family to office to commercial to higher-density residential, and we have 15% of this site, which is open space landscaped area. And there is a creek that traverses the site, and you can see it in track 12. So it provides what will be a good buffer. It'll be a good asset for the developers when they come in and develop different sites. Also, when we go over to track 11, we've got a lake, and that lake will remain. So a lot of study, a lot of detail, a lot of changes have gone into play. But with that said, I'd like for Pat Garrett to address you briefly, and then I want to respond to whatever questions you all have and go through the plan in detail. I think David has handed out a document that you all have in front of you. There are several issues that I, after Mr. Garrett talks, want to make sure are clear within this PUD, and some of them deal with uses and limitations, and other ones deal with requests that I've heard from different planning commissioners, so.
Actually, I'd like to hear from commissioners before we have Pat speak, if that's okay. And I had some comments. I shared some of them with you earlier. One relates to non-accessory signs and the language that is in the staff report, which says unless otherwise provided herein, non-accessory signs are specifically prohibited in this PUD. And as I've talked with staff and the planning commission has in the past, we'd like unless otherwise provided herein to be stricken and have some specific language about particularly the residential tract that you want to be able to identify that does not have frontage on Kelly. Have that described instead so that we don't have any confusion about what non-accessory signs might be allowed.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask you a question on that? So you don't have a problem with our ability to have a sign on, whether it be Hefner or Kelly? You just want to make sure it's identified in the document before we proceed through council.
And that its design and materials are consistent with the other signage that we'll see in the PUD, yes.
And my client is agreeable to that, and I know Mr. Bright has picked up on this. We have limited our signs to eight feet in height and 100 square feet, so.
No, I appreciate the sign plan as you've outlined it with monument signage and so forth. No question about that at all.
But those two additions are fine with us.
Okay.
Well, Dennis, I'd like to clarify that a little bit. You're saying basically a non-accessory sign would be a sign on one of the frontage roads that would identify what's in this development, as opposed to a non-accessory sign being a billboard?
Yes, sir.
And so can't you say that in a little plainer, simpler English so that we don't run into a problem? Before, I had the same comment Chairman did, just strike that first phrase that says unless identified elsewhere. And if you want a true non-accessory sign, my suggestion would be tell us what it's going to be and where it's going to be, and we'll consider it. But I don't think that's what you're asking for. I believe you're just asking to identify what's in the project, which I don't have a problem with, as long as it's consistent with those other signs and there are no quote "billboards" pop up like we've recently seen elsewhere.
I, we are okay with that, and we will modify the language and coordinate with legal staff so they're comfortable with it, so that we don't have any problems that might occur at the building permit stage.
I'd also raised a couple of other questions. One, I think on that corner, eight-plus acres of commercial is more than I think ought to be there. And my comment to Dennis earlier in the day was I thought that the C3 that we might see at a location like that ought to be more like C1, something to serve the neighborhood, than to be a broad-based C3 group of uses. Now, he's come in with some uses eliminated. I'd want to take a few minutes to actually go through what they have remaining because we haven't looked at this before right now. So I'd like that opportunity for everybody to look at the uses that are removed and the ones that would then remain.
I have a comment. It was a question, Mr. Chairman, about the uses. And the C3 uses eliminated within the PUD, number one is communication services antennas. And the way I've read your application, communication services antennas are provided as a conditional use in every place else, R401, et cetera.
He's taking those out across the board.
Well, that's not what this says.
I know, but that's our earlier discussion, so.
That's right. We have agreed to take communication towers out of the entire site.
Second comment is that the staff report on the TE number 2 allows EMD signs limited to track 9. As I read this revised map that you just handed out, track 9 is now designated as RA up in the northeast corner. I would prefer there to be no EMD signs allowed in this entire development.
Okay, I'll ask my client. I do not believe that's a problem, but I just need to confirm it.
And then the other thing is the overall comment. The map that was in the package doesn't match the map that we just got handed. I mean, it's a different thing entirely. But we've talked about this before. In order to analyze a development, a project of this magnitude with this many tracks, I really don't want to study it up here on the horseshoe with a brand-new, okay, where is all this stuff? You know, because in the map on the, that was in the packet, I was unable to find out where your RA was. It wasn't listed at all, you know? So it was like, I mean, in other words, I know you've worked on this for a year, nine, 10, whatever they were, applications that come in there. But when you come in with the final, final, I'd like to have it be really, you know, I'd like to have this so I could study it and then really, you know, do an analysis.
What I might tell you is that was submitted...
Oh, that's another one.
That was submitted to the staff when we gave them our final. The only, the only thing that changes, Mr. Bright, is that on behalf of the neighborhood, we made three additional agreements. And the area that's shown as R1, northeast of the bicycle track, we agreed to take the 600 feet from the edge, the east property line. That density will be limited to three units an acre. Then the rest of that little piece will be at 3.5 units per acre. We had already reduced our density for single-family down to five, and as you're aware, the standard single-family, 7.26. So we had agreed that today, we're going to make that change. And in addition, when development occurs on the R1 properties, there'll be site-purged screening for each lot that's developed on the east edge.
Put all of this material?
No, this is something Mr. Garrett and his neighborhood and I reached an agreement on yesterday. And then the third piece is that in the 50-foot greenbelt area on the east portion of the track, right now there exists a road that goes to a couple of houses that are just east of here, and the neighbors wanted to make sure we weren't going to put a second road in, and we agreed to that, so.
Also, as a point of clarification in my discussion with Mr. Box earlier today, he clarified that the R4 zoning has not been increased, has not been increased by 10 acres. It is unchanged.
And I think staff would agree with that also. Yeah. All we did in regard to the R4, after we met with the neighborhood, they requested that we increase the RA development that surrounded their properties. Didn't have a problem with multifamily as long as we moved it around to some different areas. And after reviewing it and thinking about it, it made more sense anyway because it's adjacent to a golf course. So you're going to have no density on the west side, so that's what we did.
Well, and I think that's fine as a buffer to the property owners to the east.
Right.
There are probably still more uses than I'd be comfortable with in the C3, and that's particularly because we don't have a developer. We're just trying to zone this so that it can be marketed, as I understand it. I mean, the bank's not going to be the developer. Normally, when we see a project like this, it's the developer who's talking to us. And that creates a little bit different circumstance for me than we would normally expect to see. So I just share that as a thought when I talk about how much C3 and how many uses.
Now, when you talk about the amount of C3, it's a little over eight acres, and you don't have, you're not going to have any C3 on the other corners.
What a blessing, by the way.
So, I mean, we could go up to 10, but we thought eight was good. And the reason we did eight was because that's where the creek started, and that was the line of demarcation, so.
I'd be a lot happier with about five. Nick?
Mr. Chairman, I have some of the same concerns you've expressed about the signs, some of the things Bob mentioned. But my biggest difficulty with this, as Dennis pointed out, there's been multiple revisions. And yet we get to hearing day, and we're pulling 23 of the C3 uses out, making other deals with the neighborhood to, to buffer the neighborhood to the east immediately before the hearing, and no one has addressed my biggest concern, and that is the intensity of this development. If you look at tracks 1, 2, and 3, they provide for 1,491 apartment units that will be built of 30% brick. And then track 4 provides for another 180 units of multifamily. That's very dense. When I had a discussion with Mr. Box earlier about this, he pointed out, oh, well, we're, on one of those tracks, we're restricting it to senior living. That's still 371 apartments, whether there's seniors in them or not. I'm very concerned with the intensity of this, not just, as the chairman pointed out, yeah, there's eight acres of C3 now that it's being watered down by taking out some of these 23 uses, but it's still C3. This is, by definition, a speculative PUD. And, you know, I'm just thinking of 122nd Penn. I'm thinking 30% brick. We may wish to be shooting for market rates. I'm not sure we'll get them, or if we do, how long we'll get them. That's my big concern about this application is the intensity, the density.
If I could respond to that, I think you've got to, I, this commission has always differentiated between a retirement community and just a standard apartment project. The 230 acres that you see only has two tracks that allow for standard apartment development. And the other track you mentioned is R3 development regulations. So, yes, it is more intense on Kelly than it is on our eastern edge, but that's because it flows better and connects better with the neighborhood back to the east, and we have a golf course with no density, no development back to the west. So when you talk about 122nd Penn, I'd be the first to say that was a mistake when it was done, and I think it's a mistake today that none of us want to make. But this is not 122nd Penn where you have a quarter section and you have in excess of four apartment projects within that section. Here, we have 230 acres. We have 37 acres that are greenbelt open area, and we have a mixed use of a combination of R1, RA, some multifamily, some retirement community. So with that, you look at your plan, and your plan says that the densities we're asking for are consistent with our final revision. Now, the last revisions with the neighborhood were just done within the last couple of days, but they really don't change the plan a lot. They just lower some of the densities and a few requirements on our east edge. So it doesn't change what we submitted many months ago.
Comments from other commissioners?
I think that that's the thing that troubled me about the whole application is, as you say, it is speculative. And it seems to me that what you've, I mean, for lack of a better word, you've put in the most uses, although with this handout, you've deleted some, but the most C3 uses with the most intense density of places for people to build, with the lowest category of materials that we normally would have seen this kind of application, 70% brick. You know, I mean, that's the standard that we look at.
That's not... No. When you deal with three-story apartments, the last year, year and a half, you go back and ask your staff how many of them had 70% brick requirements, and you won't find very many. Because most three-story apartments...
We've done both.
Well, this is what I'm saying, is I understand why. I fully understand why this is put together as it is. It's something that's going to be marketable to somebody out there. We don't know. One of the good things I like about this is that on, I guess, I'm not sure what you have to submit on the site plans when you, you know, when you actually sell this stuff. Do you have to come in with a site plan on the RA, on the R4s?
With each track?
So all of that?
Every track.
That's a plus in your favor because this doesn't mean right now this is what it is. But landscaping, the building materials, you know, what it looks like, what the elevations are, where things are, site screening, et cetera, all that comes in later, when you sell a piece, right?
Yes, sir.
You know, so, I mean, so that's my benefit. But as far as the uses, Commissioner Yorkle, you know, pointed out, is that what, how much can you put in an eight-acre commercial corner that, you know, we may not really want to have in this? We want to have this be as nice as it can be, you know? And you guys want to sell it, you know, and let it be developed by somebody. And you're saying, here's the package, and I've got, you can do this many uses, and you have this kind of materials, and with nothing else, the site plan comes in, and you have, you know, essentially a cardboard box that has a flat roof, et cetera. I don't know. You know, then we deny it. But what I'd like to see, this is a big piece of property in a pretty vulnerable area, lots of green spaces and lots of nice places. This should be a really well-done, well-considered development rather than, we hope this sells. And that's, it's a troubling application, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
But Bob's coming in about seeing it at the type, at the review process. And I'm not saying they will do this. I'm saying they can do this. They can bring us a site plan for their apartment building, 70% EPIS, 30% brick, and we say, no, we don't like it. You're denying. They say, wait a minute, you approved it in the PUD. You know, when it says to me, 30% brick, no more than 70% EPIS or hardy board, yeah, we've done both. I agree with the, we've required brick all the way up. We've required brick on front sides. We've required hardy board for all other things. We've done a lot of things. To my knowledge, we've never approved one that could be built 30% brick and 70% EPIS.
And we've got two out in Ward 8 that have been approved within the last year with this same standard.
Not that it just says EPIS.
It says 30% brick, and the rest can be hardy plank. It could be EPIS. It could be a number of different materials. That has been the standard for the last year and a half on three-story apartment projects that come before this commission. Now, maybe you've had one. It was all brick, but if you look at the scales, you're going to see what we've asked for is what is the standard. But there was two questions that were asked...
R4 is always three-story?
No. And we don't have a standard either.
No, but most, let's think about how many apartments have been built of recent date. Go to those and tell me how many of them are two-story. Not many of them. Most of them are three-story apartments. And that is the standard for the last two to three years of what's your typical apartment development. But there was two questions that were asked, and one dealt with a sign, and one dealt with density issues. Let me talk to my client, and then I'll let Mr. Garrett talk.
Well, I've got, as I'm listening to the discussion, several issues. Speculative nature would be one. Too much commercial would be two. An acreage, too many uses that aren't probably appropriate for that site would be three. Density would be four. I'm not ready for this today, but go ahead, Dennis.
Two issues. Number one, on the signs, we won't put an LED reader sign anywhere within the 230-plus acres. Two, with regard to the density, what we tried to do was mirror what your code allows. Your code allows 34 units an acre. We will lower that in the tracks that Mr. Gales mentioned, that being tracks 1, 2, and 4, correction, and 3, to 28 units per acre.
How many?
28.
28 from?
34. And 34 is your standard. That's what's in your ordinance.
If we're zoned R4.
Correct.
Right. A number of people have walked in since we first opened the meeting, and if any of you have pagers or cell phones that are on, we would ask that you would silence those, please. Janice, do you have something, your comment?
I think this is an awful lot of information to be absorbing, just as we sitting here around the horseshoe. I can appreciate that they've been at this a long time. But if, given that, I'm not sure it would kill anybody to take a little longer, make sure that we understand what we're really dealing with here. I certainly would not in any way want to punish them for dealing with their neighbors even right up to the last minute, and I think that's a great thing, and that they're doing what they can to accommodate their neighbors. But I would like to make sure that we have everything that we need to see in front of us and have had time to really examine it and digest it. That would be my comment.
James? One thing, I met with him earlier in this development of the plan, and where the project came from, I think it was a tremendous improvement. It was awful. But I think they made a tremendous improvement, and when I look at the commercial on the corner, and I look at the makeup of the area, I think it, I think some of the things that we've said are good to make it even better. But like Janice, I think that now they'll take all that and just put it in the plan so we get exactly what we've called for here in the meeting. But I looked at a lot of those commercial uses that was eliminated. When I went through it, it was almost verbatim the things I would have taken out, maybe one or two others, but I think that they did a good job on that. But I think we cleaned it up and get it exactly like what we've agreed to here, taking out the EMT signs. And we have, it's a positive that we get to look at the specific site plans for each one of the developments as they come on, so I don't have a lot of problems with it. It has some particular characteristics because it is speculation, but I think if we, if they agree to change some of those things, I'd hate to vote on it today, but I would like to see it in its final form from whatever we visit with. I had a little bit more insight than some of the others when we was working through, but I think they've come a long ways with it. Even the commercial, that eight acres of commercial, that's still only 3%, or a little bit over 3% of the whole 200 and something acres. And when you look at it, that's not really a whole lot when you look at it in proportion of the development. And what's really in that area is a service that area, so that didn't bother me as much. But it would be good if we did have more specifics, but I think they've come a long ways with it. James, I think it's a little ironic, and they have come a long way. I concede that. But they should have come a long way. We've seen this in our packet three or four times now. When we first saw it, we saw things like mobile homes and things like that, which that's certainly something that's easy to give up and a big step forward. With the concessions they've just made, we're still looking at 1,232 apartments there. And I agree, there's too much floating around today to vote on it, but I'm wondering if this application came to us in its final form, or how it comes to us in a final form, would come to us the first time, how we would react to it after we've been conditioned about five times.
Any other comments, commissioners? Dennis?
Well, since Mr. Garrett was nice enough to come down and take his time, I'd like to, for you all, give him at least the opportunity to talk about the process that we've been enjoying these many months.
Okay. Pat, if you'd give us your name and address for the record?
My name is William Pat Garrett. I live at 1705 East Efton Road, which is east of this track here. My property adjoins it on the east. We've had many discussions with the bank. We had a lot of issues with the density. We were very concerned about entrances to the property, and we've got an agreement that will come off of the Kelly and on the far west end of Hefner. We eliminated all the R1 in the southeast corner, going to rural residential instead of higher density. We've got a larger green belt. We've got a buffer zone. So we had a lot of things accomplished and kept the density more across from the golf course and on Kelly, which was important to all of my neighbors out there. We've had, there's about 20 people that have been involved with me in the discussions, and we felt like we had a fairly reasonable compromise yesterday, getting the signage, getting rid of all the mobile homes, getting rid of the TV towers and transmission towers. And so we had a compromise. Thank you all.
So, Pat, basically what you guys have done is you've protected the eastern front, if you will. Moved some entrances, changed the density back to rural residential, which it was originally set up for, and that's how you've protected yourself.
Yeah, we felt like we had to, more than half of the property is in more of a rural residential state again.
Yeah, counting that and the undeveloped...
I'm the far west area there, and most of the homes are on acreages, and we wanted to keep the neighborhood that way.
Thank you.
And to further that point, I want us to look at what your plan says. And your plan says that this HUD is in conformance with what the plan recommends in regard to the kinds of urban growth patterns that it designates. So it's not like we've moved things around that shouldn't be there. We've just put them in the right place, but the densities are called for in your plan. Now, if Mr. Williams wants a continuance till next month, we'll make the revisions, and you'll have that plan map that you wanted.
I think, Dennis, with all the comments that have been made around this afternoon, particularly Mr. Yorkle's and Mr. Gales' comments about the densities, materials, the numbers of items, numbers of exclusions, or whatever, and in my, you know, we're adding and subtracting, and we're moving, and we're deleting, and do all this. For my purpose, I would like to see it fresh, done, all the maps in place, everything's there with all, you know, I'd like to see like ingress egress, you know, like where do you get into the property? Where do you get out of it?
Now, the ingress and egress will come at the plating stage. We've agreed to plat in addition to the site plan.
So you wouldn't have that in the next packet?
No, sir.
But I think that what we're looking at is be as complete as you, just put it all together, and then come in with a fresh, and so we can have, she has to look at it and make some, you know, conscious decision, well-informed.
And since it's on holidays, if we increase the height of our sign, would that be...
I would love it. Come on.
Also, although your ingress and egress will come at plating, if you've made agreements with respect to, you know, limits of no access or whatever, it would be good to have that information.
In other words, numbers, and how far apart.
Right.
So I move seven.
Okay, for motion second to next month.
Continue this to January 12th is our first meeting in January?
Yes.
Okay, cast your votes, and it is continued.
You all have a Merry Christmas.
Same to you, Dennis.
Item 7 is S.P.U.D. 643, an application by 164th and Western Development, rezoning 164,000 Northwestern Avenue from P.U.D. 1289, S.P.U.D. 643, and Ward 8.
Mr. Chairman, the members of the commission, Brian Kuhn, with Kenny and Janine, I wish you Merry Christmases at the beginning. This SPAD, if you just, I just normally go to the staff report. There are no TEs, and staff recommends approval. Be glad to answer any questions you might have.
One real quick question, Dennis. This is a single-use S.P.U.D. We're going to build a Firestone Auto store on it.
Build a Firestone on it, yes, sir.
Why do we have the following uses will be only permitted on this site? Senior living, community recreation, and the rest.
We didn't prepare the SPAD document, but I've been told by my client who's behind me here that that's what staff recommended we put on there. So I understand, you are building a Firestone, there's no doubt.
Well, but we have 40 uses here.
I understand.
Well, I didn't count them, but a bunch, okay?
There's a bunch.
Can we modify that to whatever the appropriate uses for a Firestone store?
We would just like to still keep flexibility for future purposes. I mean...
Well, I got it.
And that, like I said, that was recommended by staff, and it even says we appropriately lowered the uses, so...
Stupid question. How large is this site? About 30,000 square feet, right?
Okay, uh-huh.
So we're going to put a gasoline sales large on that?
A gas station would fit on 30,000?
Not a gasoline station large.
Well, I'm just...
You see what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying. I'm just saying, these were recommended by staff. So if you want to...
Okay. Where are we going to sell the alcohol beverages? I guess that's a liquor store.
Yeah, you could have a liquor store.
So is that going to be in the back of the Firestone store or in the front?
It will not be in Far, it will not be in what we're building originally.
In the library? It's going to be there.
What we're building originally. We could probably go through the whole list like that.
No, I understand.
I understand. I'm just saying, this is what staff recommended.
This is a very, very small site. It has a site plan that's very specific, and it has every conceivable use in the world. I'm not saying you need to necessarily restrict it to a specific single use, but, you know, where's the childcare center? Whoever did this PUD, I don't think they did require a service.
I understand what you're saying.
Because, you know, I have absolutely no problem with the Firestone store, the layout of it. But this just looks ridiculous.
I understand. You hear what I'm saying, that's what staff recommended that we put in there. Now, I'm working on a site right now that was a blockbuster video. Now, it's a pawn shop, and it's getting ready to change to something else. This site, you know what the building's going to look like. You know what the parking's going to look like. There's chances all of this could be something else. I don't think that there's any of those things you probably have a problem with.
Well, maybe.
If there's some you do have a problem with, let me know, and we can probably take...
Well, we had animal sales in here, so I'm going to say we're, all of these bays for Firestones, one of them's going to be goats, one of them's going to be sheep, one of them's going to be horses, and we're going to sell, we're going to sell animals there.
Well, here's...
You know, my point is, I'm not trying to pick on a single use. I'm saying, why don't we continue this for one round and conform it to what you guys really want?
I have a, we're under contractual, I mean, I understand, I'm doing what staff asked me to do, so...
Okay, Rob, we're not going to approve what staff has suggested here, I don't think.
Okay, can you do this? Can I ask you a favor? Can you go to the next item, which would be, we're seven, eight, and nine. Can you go to the next item? I can talk to my client.
I'll take you to the last item. I don't want to be negotiating uses from the horseshoe. We don't do it as a general rule, and I don't want to be doing it. So I'm not going to have any, the rest of the people here sit through that. But if you're willing to wait to the end of the docket, we'll let you come back.
Can I ask my client?
Just, excuse me, just a second, Brian. My objection is exactly what we're hearing right now, except that there is a significant negative reaction to strip shopping centers. And what you have is a building, there's no longer a Firestone building, and these uses you have, put them in there for a 30-foot entrance, and you've got a strip shopping center, bang, 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 down the end of the street. I object to it totally. I think it should be a single use. It's a nice plan, except that I need to know what the landscaping is, because that's not on your map. But it's a nice use that would be approved by me, I think, and everybody else, if it's a single use. But the way you've constructed the PUD, or staff, or whomever did, doesn't get it.
Okay.
No, I would just say that we didn't pick these specific uses. These are uses that are permitted in the current P.U.D. 1289. And we felt, well, if they were appropriate then, they would certainly be appropriate now. This may not turn out to be a Firestone.
But once you change the character of it, like Bob said, Firestone goes out, strip shop can come in.
Well, they're in for a rezoning, and we have an opportunity to address this, and that's where we are. Okay, we'll go to item 9, come back to item 7 at the end of the docket. Pardon?
We'll continue.
Oh, you'll continue? Okay, we'll take a motion to continue until January 12th, then, our first meeting in January?
Move to continue this item to January 12th.
Okay, we're a motion as second to continue item 7 to January 12th. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Thank you, Bob.
Do we want to talk about the final plat? Can we move forward on that one?
Let's continue that one, too.
This final plat doesn't go to council, so, okay, we'll just continue them all.
Continue. All right, we'll take a motion then to continue item 8 to January 12th. Have a motion as second to continue item 8. Cast your votes. That's also continued. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Brian. Item nine. We'll, I guess we need a motion to continue item nine as well?
Move to continue item number nine to January...
We have a motion and a second to continue item nine. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Still Merry Christmas.
Item number 10 is SN 050, which is to consider a resolution changing the name of Bath Avenue, lying between Northeast 4th and Northeast 6th Street to Bishop Malcolm Kobe Avenue, Ward 7.
Is the applicant here? Commissioners, applicant's not here. The staff has a recommendation to defer this name change indefinitely.
Make a motion that we defer this item indefinitely.
Is there a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue item 10 indefinitely. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Item 11 is ABC 745, an application by Rick Thurman from ABC 3, overlaying C 3 at 3921 North Lincoln Boulevard, and Ward 7.
Sir, if you'd give us your name and address, please?
Rick Thurman, 8422 Norvik Street, Houston, Texas.
Okay. And tell us what you want to do, please.
I just want to get this changed from ABC, I think it was two before, to ABC 3. I think this is the second time that it's come before you all, so, I think the first time it was approved, but they didn't go outside the, I think the guidelines, they only went 300 feet instead of 600 feet. I think that was on September the 22nd.
Commissioners, no, well, no one has signed up.
I'm going to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I have a little problem with this nightclub, because this is an appearance quarter, and we had a, we had a club next, you know, we got a supper club next door. The only, the proprietor who was in this building moved that sheet with Elmer's, and he said it was food, and it's not just a strict nightclub. And now we're going to have both of them right there together, and a disappearance quarter is on the way to the Capitol. And I just, I feel like it's kind of a concentration of two nightclubs in this area.
Is Elmer's a nightclub as well?
He has food.
Or is it ABC 3?
He has ABC 2, I believe it is.
Oh, two?
Yes, because he does serious food, 50% food.
Okay, so he's a restaurant...
He's a restaurant with alcohol.
With alcohol. As opposed to a club?
He's not a nightclub.
Okay.
And I was, basically, on this particular deal, I was looking more like a lounge kind of setting, not, I guess the club thing got kind of thrown out of proportion here on the whole deal. When I came into this deal, it was a situation where the gentleman was moving from that particular building over across, I think it was across the street, more or less. But this was a deal where I thought it was going to be, basically, that was enough accommodation for both of these places to be there, and not necessarily be a conflict with each other at all.
Well, this is, that's a straight nightclub, where it reads here.
You said what now?
What's being proposed in this application is a straight nightclub, no food or anything. And then it started concentrating similar activities. You know, he has food, but at least it's a restaurant with alcohol. And then this is an appearance quarter to the Capitol, and we've got other businesses and things there. And I just have a problem with that concentration of those two activities in this particular location.
Where is the one that has, where's the restaurant that's there? What are the two restaurants to the south? There's one on, what, on, between...
Those are fast food, I think.
Are those fast food?
Barbecue.
Those two?
Yeah.
I think so. So those don't have ABC overlays at all? So those two are there. I don't know whether two makes a concentration or not. That's really what I think I'm struggling with, because there's only two. You know, and one of them is to the north. I mean, I just don't know that, you know, across the street, maybe, anyway, I think that I'd still stick with my motion.
Well, I can certainly understand your concern about that. We can all remember what Lincoln Boulevard used to look like. But I guess I also agree that two is not too dangerous a concentration at any rate. And we've already approved this once, so I don't know really what basis I would have on which to change my decision about that.
And upon my initial conversation with this gentleman, when he was first moving out of this place, I think, let's go back for a little bit of history here, the day that I came, he was moving out, and I explained to him what I kind of wanted to do and the whole bit. And so he thought it was a great idea, because he was moving out. I think there was a disgruntness with him and the present landlord that I intend to lease from, which I didn't know all this until later on. So he initially said when he was moving across the street, I talked to him, he took me across the street when he was building out the place, and I explained to him, you know, what I was wanting to do, wanting kind of a lounge concept, maybe where you could come and drink and watch the basketball and football games. So we agreed upon this. Now, as it turns out, after I decided to submit it the first time, and I explained to him what I was doing, way when he was even, when he was even going back to the initial, before he even put any, anything of interest in the building across the street, we talked about it personally, I came here and we were talking. And then afterwards, I submitted the report with the $1,600 or whatever to the planning commission, and then, of course, it came for approval now the second time. Now, if you look at this, the letter came up on October 19th, this was before the council the first time. I don't understand why it didn't come up the first time, when we were talking about it.
Well, I wasn't here for that vote when they approved it on the, at the commission that time. This is what I'm having, when I say talk about concentration, this is on 38th Street. And on 36th Street, just right around the corner, they got two clubs, and there's been a couple of killings there, and shootings, and so I'm saying, so, so I don't, I'm not looking at the next-door relationship, I'm looking at the area relationship of the ones crossing Grandis on the corner of 36th and Lincoln. There's two clubs around that corner there, that there's been a number of problems there in the last year and the year before. So that's my concern, and it's in the area that it's located. And I agree, right next door, doesn't necessarily make the concentration, but when I look around the corner, and I know there's been a couple of killings and shootings, and that's what I'm concerned about, and I just, that's the type of activity I don't want to concentrate in that particular area. And I wasn't here when you voted last time. I was out of town.
When I saw this letter, and I couldn't help but think, well, I got mine, so now I don't want anybody else to have one. That's how the letter reads.
Well, the guy that's a letter is not the, not the club owner.
No, but he's the landlord.
He's the landlord, landlord, not the guy that I spoke with.
I understand the issue, but it's a hard one to deny. It's not an easy, easy choice here.
Are there really other protestors in this one letter?
Not that I'm aware of. Is anyone here to protest this item today? Well, action, commissioners? I didn't hear, I'm sorry. Okay, do we have a second?
Second. We'll vote.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this item. Cast your votes. And it is approved five to two. You approve, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Item 12 has been withdrawn. Item 13 is C 6307, which is a preliminary plat of Rush Brook, in Ward 7.
Good afternoon, I'm Kendall Dillon with Crafton Toll, representing the applicant, and also have the applicant, Mr. Jay Knowles, and his counsel, Mr. Russell Watlin, with me here today, in case you have any questions to them. This obviously is an application for a preliminary plat for a single-family residential subdivision, with the one exception of the commercial lot that you see there at the southeast corner of 192nd and Western. This site is, is a total of 157 acres, and is currently zoned entirely R1, single-family, with yet again, the exception of the corner up there that currently is zone C3 commercial. This preliminary plat that you currently see before you there is 455 lots with 40 acres of common area, yielding a density of about 2.9 dwelling units per acre. However, obviously, we withdrew item number 12, which was the rezoning for the R1ZL. So I think if you look at that portion, that we're proposing R1ZL, and we designed that according to the R1 regulations, that's going to cause a drop of about 15 to 20 lots. So I think we'll be looking at about 435 lots, which will yield a density of about 2.75 dwelling units per acre. I will say that we did meet back in October with several of the surrounding property owners, and listened to their concerns, and I would, I'm not sure if he's here today, but I would like to publicly thank Mr. Jim Holman. He's the president of the Homer Association for Palo Verde, and he was very instrumental in helping us facilitate that meeting and other correspondence. But through those correspondence, at least in terms of what we're hearing, I think that there's two primary concerns from several of the property owners around. Number one being the drainage, with concerns of, obviously, Chisholm Creek with the 500-year storm that we had a few years ago, there was some flooding concern or issues then, and so that's one of their concerns. And then also, there were several people that just were not comfortable with the R1ZL portion of our project. So obviously, what we've done in terms of trying to alleviate those concerns, we have agreed with them that we would provide detention for our site, and therefore be able to more adequately control the rate of runoff from our site. And then obviously, we've withdrawn the R1ZL application, and have agreed to just develop that under the current existing R1, single-family zoning. I think in regards to the T.E.s, we are in agreement with all of the staff's T.E.s. I will mention, on T.E. number four, we would like to ask for variance in regards to the subdivision access regulations. If you notice, that's the furthest, most south and east portion of our site, that you can kind of tell is isolated a little bit on the other side of the drain. And if you notice, there's a street stub that currently connects in with the Trails Edition that's in the city of Edmond, and I think that street is Trail Ridge Road that we're stubbing into. But we did get word from the city of Edmond a couple of weeks ago, that they actually have closed the west five feet of that street to obviously prevent what is a connection there. So because they've closed that, we're continuing to work with them and trying to get some sort of an access or emergency access, but at this point, I'm not sure that's going to go any further. It looks like we're probably not going to be able to connect that stub, so we're not really anticipating it. So that being the case, I met with the Fire Marshal's Office, and have worked with them, with Mike Wilson, and they are in agreement if we will make Wind Ridge Road right there south of 186th Street, that's, basically, it's the primary road to get to this area we're talking about. But if we, we are agreeing to make that a collector's street, and then we're also agreeing that those homes that are affected, or they're outside the subdivision regulation in this portion that we're talking about, that we will agree to sprinkle those houses. So with that, I think the Fire Marshal's Office is on board with the variance request, so we respectfully ask for that variance from you all.
How many lots would that affect, Kendall?
There, there's 45, I'll be honest, I can't remember if it's 45 or 47. It's one of the two.
I'm trying to figure out, at least from what I'm looking at, how I would get in and out of here.
It's, it's a little bit difficult to see on your map because of the existing drive that's kind of overlaid over the top that's going away. But if you notice, there's a street from that intersection of 186th and what is Windy Ridge Road. It's kind of in somewhat of the central, toward the eastern portion of the site. But if you notice, it goes south, and then curves across the drain where there's an existing crossing right now. And that's the street that would provide access to this, and obviously, the street we're agreeing to make a collector's street.
So what street is the western boundary?
The...
The north-south street?
The north-south street that you would access, it's not marked on my... Windy Ridge Road.
Well, no, but once I, when I'm trying to get out of the addition, and I take Windy Ridge, Windy Ridge Road to northwest 186th Street, and drive to the west, what street am I connecting with to get out?
Well, you can, you can actually go either way. I mean, we've got access points on 192nd and Western, but you could, at 186th Street, you could go west to Western.
Okay, that's my question, was it Western? I wanted to know what street it was.
It's Western.
Is that Western?
What, yes, yes, I'm sorry. Western is our westernmost border, and 192nd is the northernmost border.
That's what I wanted to know.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was misunderstanding.
You take 186 over to Western, basically.
Say that one more time.
You take 186 west over to Western.
All right, I apologize, I was misunderstanding your question.
And Western's a two-lane street?
That portion of it is, yes, correct, correct. So obviously, we're asking for the variance on T.E. number four, and then the only other thing that I might mention is, and I think you all had got an amended staff report with T.E. number eight, there's some additional verbiage added in there to kind of clarify with the withdrawal of our rezoning application, that that will adhere to your...
I've got that language, which we'll read into the record if we're going forward here.
Okay. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you got.
I have a question on the traffic study that was submitted, and this is what the staff report said. The traffic study is submitted reasonably addressed potential improvements. However, it relies heavily on the assumption that the city's future improvements seemingly will be constructed in concert with the proposed development. I have no idea what that means, other than, are there proposals for the widening of Western?
Yes.
Is that, has a bond issue been passed to establish those, that possibility, is that right?
Right, we've been working with your engineering and traffic management department to make certain we're all on board with that and what's happening. And currently, there is a bond project that's scheduled to be awarded, at my understanding, the spring of this next year, and it widens 192nd, and obviously constructs the signal and the left, approaches, left turn lanes at the intersection of northwest 192nd and Western.
But what about Western?
The Western actually is part of the '07 bond project as well, and I think it's scheduled for a little bit later, but yes, there is a bond project to widen Western all the way to 192nd.
So both the north and the west side, where you get ingress egress, that's covered by future, that's what this refers to?
Yes, exactly.
J.J., do we know where we are on, on the calendar, in the CIP plan for widening Western and making these improvements, 192nd? I don't, Public Works, Mike. Is there somebody back there still that might, okay. We'll get someone out.
They can verify it, but I've been told that 192nd will be awarded in the spring of 2012, and then, I want to say, the Western one is a couple of years after that. I can't remember the exact date of that one.
Okay, well, maybe we'll get an answer to that. We do have a couple of people signed up to speak. Commissioners, any comments or questions before we hear the protestors?
Let me just ask one question, Mr. Chairman. Staff report says Wind Ridge Road must be renamed on the, on the final plat. Renamed to what?
At this point, we don't know. We'll work with staff on any name, the name's really not that significant to us, but any name that is suitable and not already used.
Because it appears to be going in a north-south direction, same as the other named streets, that's why I didn't know.
All right, we'll rename it to whatever is appropriate with staff with the final plat.
Did you hear a question earlier?
It's about Western Avenue widening?
Yes.
It's, currently, it's scheduled for 2016, that's when the bond will be sold, so I guess we'll start planning in 2015. That's about the approximate timeline we have right now.
So it's seven years away, more or less, by the time you'd actually, six to seven?
Thereabouts.
Okay. Thank you, that's what we, we want to know. Any other questions before, okay, thank you. Okay, we do have a couple of people signed up. If you'd give us your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, it's D. Benham Kirk, Jr., at 201 Robert S. Kerr, Suite 710.
That tells me you're an attorney.
I am.
Okay.
And at the outset, commissioners, I want to state for the record that I'm not anti-development, but I am concerned about a few things with respect to the proposed plat and the development.
Excuse me, are you a resident, or are you representing residents?
I live in Edmond, right there.
Okay.
On the line, so I am directly affected by... So I am directly affected by.
Just wanted to understand if you're here on your own.
But I practice here in Oklahoma City.
Okay, thank you.
I'm very concerned about drainage and also traffic, in particular, traffic. The drainage, in looking at the staff reports and the conditions, looks like they may be able to address that. Although, it should be noted that there's been recent flooding over there in the southwest corner of the development, and that could become a real problem as more and more of the surface becomes impervious. But the traffic issue right now is serious. According to the traffic study, just looking at some raw numbers, you're essentially, when your full buildout is going to essentially double, just about double the traffic counts there at the intersection of 192nd and Western. Currently, you have a big stacking problem twice a day for a number, for a significant period of time. And we all know that even though the bond has been approved with respect to the 2007 bond for that entire area to be revamped, in the absence of the signal and, and the improvements there for 192nd, you're going to have a real problem. And I don't know how to address that, other than perhaps until such time as that intersection is signaled, you should restrict left turns coming out of that northbound area and maybe force them to go right. Because otherwise, they won't clear, they won't be able to clear the intersection and you're going to have some problems there. But I feel like in looking at the traffic study, it doesn't adequately address the reality of the traffic flow up in that area. And that's my biggest concern, you know, from a safety standpoint, et cetera. It's a beautiful piece of property. It's, it's, there's lots of wildlife there, but I understand that things change. But I am concerned, as I say, about the traffic and the drainage, and I know that other residents in the area are. I did note that the staff is requiring that the lots, they refer to it as being north of the pond, and I'm assuming that would be all of the lots that are adjacent to the Edmund City line there, all need to be reconfigured and enlarged, which is, which is another concern, because those lots are about half the size of the lots on the adjacent development. So I applaud the staff in that regard, and I thank you all for listening.
Thank you for coming down. Any questions of Mr. Kirk, commissioners? Thank you, apparently not, thank you. Kimberly White? And if you'd give us your name and address as well?
Absolutely. My name is Kimberly White. I live at 921 Posado Strive in Edmund. It's just the suburb, subdivision just south of where they are asking to develop. First, I want to say that these fine gentlemen were gracious to have a meeting with the community. We love that. We did diverse our concerns. I am coming as a private citizen, not as part of my subdivision, but I'm truly concerned about the water drainage that is going on in there. These fine gentlemen have said that they would put in retention ponds, which I think is a fabulous, fabulous thing, but I'm not quite sure that that is going to be enough to help with that. And we did have a 500-year flood. Our neighbors, just a few houses down, had five feet of water in their house. And just to give you kind of an estimate, I'm 5'3", so that's how much water was standing inside their house. Two rains back, the water was in their driveway, and that was just a normal Oklahoma rain. What I would like the council to consider is the age of the maps that they're using to make their water study and their drainage from. If they are recent, within the last five years or so, I think that would be adequate and what they, what they have presented would be great to do. Anything greater than that, I think we've added too many hard surfaces in the area and they're, they're, I'm sorry, I'm nervous. Their plans may not be using the most accurate data possible. So as a concerned citizen, I would ask that the region have a water study done if possible.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Is there anyone else who wants to address us on this item?
Again, in regards to the drainage, we are very sensitive to the situation that happened there. And one of the things I do know, not to say that there's not some issues with the flooding, but obviously, the one particular storm that's been referred to was a 500-year storm. And obviously, the design criteria to which we as engineers look at is the 100-year. So in theory, obviously, it's statistics for whatever that's worth, but that's a storm that happens once over 500 years. Now, I do know that there was a rainfall event the other day that still alarmed some folks and got fairly high, and we're sensitive to that. And that's one of the reasons that we feel like, as developers, what the right thing for us to do in this situation is to take these things into account. And that's the reason that we have, even though the staff's not necessarily requiring that this be a detention basin, we've agreed to go in and put those detention facilities in. So obviously, that's one of the things that we've made a concession on in order to do what we feel like is right and for the benefit of the community. And that in conjunction with going ahead and trying to alleviate with the R1ZL withdrawal. And again, in terms of the traffic, you know, we've worked with the traffic management department, with city engineer, assistant city engineer, in regards to what should happen there and confident in that 192nd Street widening project with the signal in the spring of this next year, which, when that happens, everything will function at acceptable level of service. And with that, we feel like we've got a good project and that everything should work fine. We'd ask for your approval.
Commissioners, if we go forward on this case, there are some language additions to two of the TEs. And the first one is to TE four, and the beginning of the TE would read as you see it. And then the additional language would be as follows. The developer's requesting a variance to section 528 of the subdivision regulations relating to the number of lots served, with only one means of access in the area served by Windy Ridge Road, south of the proposed northwest 186th Street. Six affirmative votes will be necessary for approval. Approval should be conditioned upon the developer's commitment to provide residential fire suppression systems in each residence and Windy Ridge Road being constructed to collector's street standards, south from northwest 186th Street to its first street intersection. With respect to TE number eight, the language you see there in that sentence remains and the additional language goes as follows. Instead of a period, you've got a semicolon, and the additional language reads, "And if the subject request is either withdrawn or not approved, then subsequent final plats must reflect compliance with R1 District Development Regulations," period. So it would revert to R1.
Pardon me, I thought they had already agreed to make it R1. So shouldn't that TE just say, when the final plat comes, that the, the area designated as RA will be replanted, lots will be replanted to R1 standards? And the street flow would remain the same or something like that?
Doesn't this accomplish the same thing? I mean, that's my understanding of what this does, but.
Well, as this TE eight reads, the first part of it, the design of the proposed area for zero-lot line development is subject to the council approval. But they're withdrawing that part right now. They're changing that.
They're mending it, yes.
Well, they're mending, but they're mending it by taking out, they're no longer asking for zero-lot line. But that, that part, I don't think is necessarily applicable.
Well, we can rewrite the TE then.
All right. We're fine with just stating that that portion that was currently proposed for R1ZL zoning be designed in accordance with the R1 single-family.
But the street layout will remain the same.
Right, the intent, like I say, the alignment of streets and everything is going to be generally what you see. It's just the lots will increase.
We're just going to.
So I, it's.
And that's fine.
Your language is fine, then. I don't think it makes, I think that's fine.
Kendall, could you explain what detention facilities you're proposing to do and who's approving those and what, are there water engineers or whatever?
Your staff. Yes, we'll, we'll design it in accordance with your drainage ordinance. There are areas of Oklahoma City where detention's required for those basins, and we'll just simply design in the same manner and in compliance with that as you would if it were required from the city of Oklahoma City for that basin. And obviously, your staff, all the drainage calculations, everything, with the construction plan, to go to them for complete review and approval, and we can't go build it until they say it's okay.
Commissioners, anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the variance of TE number four as read into the records.
Okay, do we have a second?
Begging.
We have a motion and a second to amend TE four as read into the record. Cast your votes. That's approved.
Then I make a motion that we approve the item with the amendment to TE number eight and the other amendments that are made to the document.
Did you mean to vote no on your?
No, I didn't.
Because you voted no.
Well, I know, I switched.
You recorded no.
Yeah.
So we'll correct that.
Correct that.
Okay, so we're.
I'm able to eliminate the R1ZL to R1, I mean, to straight R1 development, keeping the street patterns the same.
Okay, that's the amended TE then.
That's amended, TE number.
All right. Do we have a second?
Begging.
All right. Motion approved, item 13 as conditioned. Cast your votes and it's approved.
Thank you.
Item 14 is SPOD 639, application by SBA Communications Corporation to rezone 6500 North Lottie Avenue from PUD 639 to SPOD 639 in North Seven.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, good afternoon. My name is Bill LaFortune, and I think my address was read into the record at the last hearing. If you want it again, I'm happy to.
Appreciate having it again, because this is recorded.
Yes, sir. My address is 2100 South Utica Avenue, Suite 210, in Tulsa, Oklahoma, at 74114. I would introduce my co-counsel, Carrie Stats. Her address is with the law firm of Johnson &amp; Jones, 15 West Sixth Street, Suite 2200 in Tulsa, and the zip code is 74119.
Thank you.
Commissioners, we certainly would start out by stating that we are in agreement with staff's recommendation for approval based on the fact that the proposed tower does meet all the conditions for approval of this conditional cell tower use, and that we have provided sufficient evidence demonstrating that this location is the only site that will accommodate the lack of service coverage in this area, and that other locations were indeed considered by my client in coming up with this site. I'd also like to point out on page six of the staff report that the proposed development is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. Gentlemen and ladies, we are here today requesting a SPOD to allow for the construction of a 100-foot telecommunications tower. The proposed site is located within PUD 639, Cole's Garden. Exhibit A is on the screen, we've labeled as Exhibit A in your packet. That's the zoning map showing PUD 639, and more importantly, showing the actual location within Cole's Garden where that proposed telecommunications tower would go. I'd like to point out that when we filed the application, we purposely limited the area within Cole's Garden where a cell tower use could be made. We utilize only the actual site where it will be constructed. It's about .23 acres within Cole's Garden at that location. And Cole's Garden is approximately about 13 acres of land. We wanted to make sure we could allay concerns that if you approved a cell tower use in Cole's Garden, that there'd be some proliferation of cell towers, and all of a sudden, the neighborhood would be looking at several cell towers instead of a single cell tower to address this need. We do believe it's critical, in our opinion, to recognize that the underlying, the underlying zoning is O2. And we were very careful in selecting the site and in filing this application to make sure that pursuant to O2 zoning, we would meet every applicable requirement that has been put in the code for cell tower uses in regards to the O2 district. And we meet every one of those applicable regulations for a cell tower in an O2 district. More importantly, we meet, since the neighborhood is here with their concerns, the setbacks that you all have established, residential setbacks that you all have established for cell tower uses in an O2 zoning district. It's only because the PUD overlay of Cole's Garden was put on this O2 zoning district that limited uses to cultural exhibits and similar uses only, that we had to come before the commission today. I think that's very important in your consideration and your ultimate decision. Why are we here? What is the underlying reason for the request for relief? Well, certainly, that is that this new tower would address a dramatic need in this area of Oklahoma City for adequate wireless coverage and service, especially in this portion of the I-44 freeway corridor. The current coverage in this area is extremely limited, and cell phone and other wireless users are significantly, are experiencing significantly degraded service due to low signal areas. On the screen, we, and it probably isn't in your packets also, we have what we've called Exhibit B for the record, showing the AT&amp;T map of current coverage in the area. It's obvious, the significant lack of coverage, I don't know if you all can see it on your screen, I hardly can see it from where I am on this big screen, but the actual site of the tower is depicted there. And you can see that the green areas are obviously the greatest coverage, and the yellow to reds are the worst coverage. And this tower is basically going to go right in the heart of the worst area of coverage. We believe sufficient coverage in this area is critical for all Oklahoma City citizens, and particularly those traveling this portion of the I-44 freeway corridor. And we also would want to point out that this kind of coverage, an excellent coverage along this kind of corridor, in any area really of the city, but particularly freeway corridors, is critical to not only citizens, but to public safety. If it breaks down and you don't have good coverage, you can't call the police for fire. Certainly, the police and fire uses the same types of cell phones we all use. They have radios, but they use the phones dramatically. You all know that. Next is Exhibit C. We've marked Exhibit C. It's an AT&amp;T map showing service coverage in the same exact area after the proposed cell tower is installed. As you can see, the service coverage is dramatically increased. There's something else that I don't know has been addressed before the commission as, as I followed you the last three or three months with cell towers, but, and I learned it myself first time, this cell tower would address what has become a very, very compelling need by offloading wireless data and traffic off existing towers. I've seen some of your previous meetings and the concerns you all raised about that why can't we live with the existing towers? And the fact of the matter is, there's 2,000% increase, literally, in wireless data transmissions in this area and in Oklahoma City over the last two years alone, and it's only going to get heavier. What's happened is that increase in data traffic has maxed out the existing towers. So towers such as this one is needed to offload that maxed-out tower and the existing towers in the area. So not only is the coverage is bad to start with, you've got that extra issue that this cell tower would address. cell tower would address. And what happens when you're maxed out is you have call failures, dropped calls, we all hate those, poor quality calls. And so this tower would address that as well. Kohl's Garden, this site is approximately one and a half to two miles away from any surrounding AT&amp;T towers. We have Exhibit D, what we've marked as Exhibit D. It's a map that we really just got our hands on the last several weeks. It, obviously, the green, these are, these five are towers, are existing AT&amp;T towers. And you can obviously see the best service coverage is green, and it gets worse as it goes out. But what it really means is, the green's okay. The yellow means you better have a solution within the next six months. And red means maximum capacity of what is referred to as power exhaust, where you're losing it as you go out from those areas. And you'd see, if you kind of incorporate in your thought process, that the earlier exhibits, how that red dot where the tower would go would address that entire area as well as that portion of I-44 below it. Basically, it shows that all of the sectors that point in the direction of Kohl's Garden are already at maximum capacity is what it really depicts. In this case, the only option is to address, to address the capacity problem is to build a new tower. And obviously, what you've seen with the exhibits is the tower, the proposed tower at Kohl's Garden would fill that hole. Next, I'd like to address the site location process. In terms of addressing the staff's inquiry and the relevant federal law that requires we demonstrate why this location is the only site that will accommodate lack of service coverage, we've provided a letter recently to staff from our client that sets out why Kohl's Garden is the only site after site investigation in this area. In this regard, I believe you all should have, and it's now on the screen, is what we've marked as Exhibit E. Obviously, I'm not going to belabor you all in your time to go through it. It speaks for itself. I'll just highlight a few of the details. Obviously, it shows that SBA evaluated three potential sites within this degraded service area, Kohl's Garden, the County Line BBQ, and the National Cowboy Museum. County Line BBQ was not able to work because of setback issues at the front of the property, and a major downward slope you all I know are familiar with at the back of the property. I was an assistant attorney general here for two or three years at the Capitol with Robert Henry, and I think I used to go to the barbecue there. No, it's not there anymore, but we did quite a bit then. And the site just didn't work. It's undevelopable for a cell tower. They had many negotiations with the National Cowboy Museum, and it had to be disregarded because they would limit where a cell tower could go where it would not otherwise interfere with the museum's operations. And those had setback issues that could not be met without coming for relief. They did suggest we would put an antenna on the roof of the building, but that would not provide the height necessary to address this whole RF service coverage issue. Kohl's Garden was selected because it did meet all the setback requirements, it did meet all the O-two requirements, would not require any zoning relief until, of course, we analyzed it later and discovered it needed this process. There were, I know there's a protest letter where it's indicated that why don't you go north? If you go north, you're in R1 districts, and you all are more than aware than I am of the difficulty in trying to get a cell tower in any kind of residential district. So that wouldn't work. And because we needed a location closer to Sixty-third Street to address this whole coverage area that you all saw in the exhibits. Lastly, I would like to address the neighborhood concerns on the front end. Certainly, you're going to hear them. We understand their nearby residences. We reached out as soon as the letter was written by the Persimmon Hills Home Association President Mary Overall. I reached out to her immediately, and we've had several pleasant phone conversations, some emails. We wanted a meeting with the neighborhood. We tried to have a meeting with the neighborhood. They had certain set dates already in place for meetings. We barely missed one. The next one's December thirteenth. We tried, she tried, I know she's here today, she can speak for herself, but I know she tried valiantly to try to get some special meeting for us at a church or whatever. We just couldn't do it. We wanted to go talk to them and address concerns that they have. Even as late as Monday afternoon, she was trying to put together a meeting for us with as many as she could get for Monday or Tuesday night, Wednesday night, any of those three nights, we were willing to come down and meet with them. We lost communication with her yesterday. I've got an email chain, and I'm not criticizing her, but we were told we'd hear from her Tuesday morning. We didn't. We emailed her Tuesday and Wednesday, and there was just no response at all. And she's here today, and I just don't think she could put it together, but we did try. The closest resident is a man named Ronald Simpson. I talked to Ron last night. We had a pleasant conversation. He doesn't like this. He's trying to sell his property. Thinks this is going to be a hit on that. But he was willing to listen. We forwarded both Mary and Ron, staff reports, all the exhibits you all have before you, narrative, the letter from SBA. So we've tried to provide everything to them that we can. You know you're going to hear about health concerns, and our position is, we believe that, you know, it's well-established that RF emissions from telecommunications towers and antennas, it's been found they result in exposure levels on the ground level that are typically thousands of times below the FCC's limits for safe RF exposure. And these safety limits were adopted by the FCC based on the recommendations of expert organizations and endorsed by agencies of the federal government responsible for health and safety of the citizens. We don't believe there's any reason to believe that such towers could constitute a potential health hazard. I know that's there, though. It's understandable. But the evidence, and scientific evidence, is not there. In fact, I have, and I'll put it in the record if we need to, but a study that was done in Illinois by a real estate group, and they couldn't find any, and they were hired by SBA. We'll talk about that in just a second, and I don't have much more. But they found specifically that there was nothing they could find to suggest that any environmental or health issue would arise as a result of communications equipment sites being nearby residential areas. Noise concerns. Got a letter, I didn't put it in the record, I can at the end, basically saying that prior to obtaining a building permit for this site, it would have to undergo a detailed noise analysis. We certainly understand that, to make sure the noise levels do not exceed the limits set in the Oklahoma City Municipal Code for noise levels. If it is found to exceed noise levels in any way, the permit applicant would have to achieve the reduction in the noise levels by repositioning equipment, placing a barrier around the equipment, which we'll have anyway. I think staff report shows that we'd be required to do all of that, or bringing in even alternative equipment that was less noise, and they'd have to meet that requirement. The property values is probably always, besides health, the number-one issue that comes up and that you'll hear about. As I said, SBA, because they build towers all over the country, they routinely commission professional, expert, real estate appraisers to evaluate that issue, the decrease in property value. Now, you're going to say, well, SBA commissions them, right? So they're going to say what they want. Well, the letter I referred to from Illinois specifically says that they are hired to do that work, but they're not ever going to come to a predetermined conclusion because their license is on the line, their professional ethics is on the line. If they ever were perceived by anyone in the industry to be a hired gun, so to speak, they'd have no credibility and probably no business. But they actually state that. But one recent report, a different one, this was done in Massachusetts, involved a proposed one-hundred-foot monopole tower, flagpole-style, in a residential neighborhood, pretty nice residential neighborhood, a little bit like this with a lot of land around each home. And they determined, and I have the study, it's about a forty-page study, and I can put that in the record, but they determined that a tower would not have a negative impact on property values or alter the character of the neighborhood. Because, number one, market research they did of nearby communities did not reveal any diminution in value due to proximity to wireless facilities. Number two, it's a passive use. With the exception of the initial installation, it won't be manned, it won't generate onsite activity generally, increase traffic flows. Apart from routine maintenance inspections, there'd be no visible activity associated with the facility. And if you all have been out, and I'm sure you have, and seen the site, I have several times, it's already surrounded, it's backed, backed by an old maintenance building, backed in an old parking lot, away from the wedding facilities, and it has already a landscape buffer, fence buffer around that area. And even as you look to the residences to the east, the closest ones to the site, there's an embankment, I've walked it, back in the summer, it was hot. Up the embankment, there's a big tree buffer there already. And I was going to say it at the end, but I'd say it now instead, our client is willing, and I told Mr. Simpson this, who's the closest person, that they're more than willing to purchase large trees, all trees, and create an even bigger buffer. If you put them on that embankment, it really would shield. Right now, the base of it's going to be all shielded anyway with the existing embankment and buffering. But they're willing to do that to help with the neighborhood concerns about that. Obviously, it doesn't generate refuse or waste, has no employees or regular visitors or regular parking or regular traffic, and there's no need for the city to provide services. And of course, you have to have these. We have to have them, whether you like them or not. You try to put them in areas where your zoning allows them. And one area I'm going to go ahead and address right now, this is in the staff report, is the urban conservation district and the thirty-five-foot height limitation that's in that for structures. We had been required to request a variance, but my position would be on this, that that was put in there, again, this is just my opinion. What is a structure? Does that mean that you could never, ever put any kind of utility? Tower, pole of any kind to provide utility services? I don't think that was the intent of that. So that would be, my statement is, a tower to provide essential utility services like wireless data and cell coverage, or telephone, or cable TV. I look in my backyard, I don't look at a cell tower, but I look at several very, very tall, old, in my beautiful backyard that we put a lot of money into, old, tall, wooden telephone poles that carry, we don't have underground yet, that carry cable wires, television, telephone wires, the big barrels and electrical barrels. I don't like looking at them. But that's essential utility services, and that's where I think this falls. And I'm not going to belabor the property value issue, but that Illinois study, and this, I'm going to close with this, until I get some rebuttal hopefully. But that property value issue, they went out and said, we're going to, we've been hired to determine whether cell towers near residences decrease property values. We're doing two things. We're going to find out, using the usual appraisal methodology, whether this is true, and we're going to talk to all the real estate agents, agents in this whole community about whether they've seen this happen. They looked thirty-five to forty different residential homes near cell towers and within view of cell towers. And they came back and concluded there was no ascertainable diminution or difference in value, property values, because of the existence of that tower. And they also talked to all the agents, who said in their businesses, they had not discovered that. And I'm more than happy to provide that to the commission if and when necessary. In conclusion, I would respectfully request approval of this SPOD. Thank you all. Appreciate your patience.
Commissioners, we have a number of people sign up. Do you want to comment now or later?
I have a couple of questions that maybe could be addressed and may allay some of the protesters' concerns, may not. Can you tell us the size of your search ring, what works here?
Well, one of the problems I had today is the RF engineer from AT&amp;T was to be here with us and did not appear. And I'd hate to say that I'm an expert enough to give you an answer on that. I would always say to you, Commissioner, that if you looked at the prior map...
Well, if you go to the previous exhibit to this one, this one, that shows the need, what came to mind is, obviously, you mentioned a couple of sites, or a couple of sites were mentioned in the letter, the Cabo Hall fame, the barbecue place. They're not this exact site, so they're obviously within the search ring.
And even going to the north, Commissioner?
Well, sure, it goes somewhat to the north, which you're on in the residential, I understand that. But I also see a weak spot or a need south of the highway also. And my question would be, there's a lot of stuff down south of that that's not residential, that would seem to be in the search ring, would seem to be a suitable location for that site. And so when you say this is the only one, this is the only one we could go make a deal on?
And we've worked with the setbacks. I think you all understand, anybody trying to do this always looks at the minimal, so they don't have to be here.
But if you look at the south side of the interstate there, where you need help, obviously, that looks like there'd be adequate possibility. And what, regrettably, what you have selected, and I know how the guy selected, he looked at a zoning map, and he said, this is O-two zoning. Ah, I found a spot. I understand this. But on further analysis, you know, he found a spot that is restricted to a very specific single use, which is not a cell tower. There lies why you're here. So to say, oh, yeah, it's O-two, and it fits in O-two, yes, if this was a straight O-two zoning, I agree with you, it would certainly fit. You wouldn't be here, you'd go build your tower by right. Would be done.
Sir.
Again, it's not. You picked a SPOD that is as narrow as we could possibly make it when we zoned it. I was on this commission when we zoned Kohl's Garden, and there was a lot of work and effort went into it, and, you know, I won't tell you that at that time, we went through the uses and said, well, we'll allow these uses, and we will specifically eliminate the cell tower use. No. But what we did is we eliminated not only the cell tower use, but all other uses for a very specific reason. Now you're coming back and asking to add it, and with the cry of, well, it's the only location. Just looking at your propagation map, now it appears there are numerous other locations that would fill that hole. Yeah, I know, you haven't made a deal on those, the site selection guy hadn't been able to go out and make a deal, but I don't know...
Commissioner, if I could, I think if we put this map on that one, I'm positive, and I'm willing to state on the record, not being an RF engineer, but they did have to choose the site they chose to cover not only that area, mainly that area to the north, but also across I-44. And if you went down to the area, if we go back, Lance, to the next one, if we went down, then when you're suggesting they start to search, I think they're going to have a real difficulty addressing that whole yellow and red area to the north.
Well...
That would just be my...
You're saying...
Circumstantial conclusion, looking at the maps.
I don't know the distance, the actual distance from your tower going straight south to the expressway, but it's not a, it's not a great distance. So all I'm saying is, if you were positioned on the south side of the expressway, and there are also some other commercial activities up and down the Sixty-third Street corridor, like the barbecue place you cited, there are some others that I also would appear to be in that search ring. that search ring. This just looks to me as to be a matter of more of a convenience for the guy doing the lease.
I was very clear with the client, though. We needed them to establish exactly what they did, that this was the only site, and that was the letter that...
Well, no, I understand. I now have the site, and now I back into all my justification.
I can only guess, Commissioner, that you may be right, and I'm only guessing that the RF engineer would tell you if he was here, that they had to cover all that yellow and red, and as much to the south as they could. They may have to go south to cover what still exists.
Well, but my point is, would he tell me, "Oh, if I moved it a hundred yards, one way or the other, or 200 yards, one way or the other, I couldn't do it." Well, certainly, if you move it anywhere from where, from one exact location in any direction, you're gonna lose something at the other side. I understand that, but again...
If we went from 63rd Street, Commissioner, south, across Cowboy Hall of Fame, the Country Barbecue, and across all of I-44, which I don't know how many lanes it is there, but it's pretty large, I think it'd be more than a couple hundred yards, and I think as you started to get down to that yellow and red area south of I-44, I'm just guessing again, not being an expert, that, I mean, if we need to have the RF engineer to answer these questions, we'll work with you and continue.
Well, no, you've pretty much answered.
And I think, can I just say something? And I think what Nick is saying, when I look at the map, and I look at one of your locations, it was on the south side of 63rd, on the lower part, almost to I-44, almost I-44, the Cowboy Hall of Fame, so, but I guess what Nick's saying, that's only, you know, a few, couple hundred yards. You quite a ways, you're probably 600, 800 feet from the location now. And if you'd move another 200 or 300 feet to the south, because this location of the Cowboy Hall of Fame was quite a distance south. And it was out of the residential, closer to the residential...
I agree with you completely, and I think the letter details that they looked at both those sites and would've loved it, but they're there, but couldn't. I think you're absolutely right, though. I mean, and we had this discussion in detail, saying, I went back to the client, said, "Let's hammer out. Why didn't the Cowboy Hall of Fame not work? Why didn't the Country Barbecue not work?" And that's what I got.
And I appreciate the yellow color, it says that you don't have coverage, you know, that's beyond my ability to even comment upon the technology that says that that's right or wrong. Your comments about the coverage that AT&amp;T has in these areas is extremely limited. I think that the standard is, is that, as far as federal law, we're not in any position to restrict a communications tower to provide for communication services.
Right.
But my question is, overall, what's our role when you talk about data transfer? This is a completely different world. We're dealing with AT&amp;T, or whomever, Verizon, Sprint, whatever it is, that are competing head-to-head on who gets the right apps, who gets whatever there is on the phones that you have, and so therefore, there's going to be a proliferation. You mentioned the old-fashioned telephone pole. Commissioner Williams just, you know, observed that what we're dealing with is old-fashioned 100-foot communications towers located every other block, in order to cover all the data transmission that's going to occur. If you think it's funny now, it's gonna be not funny two years from now. So, my question is, is it our obligation and bounded duty to make it so that you, and you would be AT&amp;T, you'd be Sprint, you'd make you compete favorably against everybody else, at the same time impairing comfortable neighborhoods, residential areas, that would, you know, have been very comfortable dealing with the conventional telephone pole, that's what you have, but a 100-foot tower that's up, you know, as high as the eye can see, I don't think that that's really what our duty is, because you can, you have coverage, limited, yes it is, but I could make a phone call on AT&amp;T in that area and get from one point to the other. I might lose something if I'm texting, or if I'm transmitting a whole album of photographs, or whatever there is. And so I'm troubled by what it is that we're being, and we are not just the Oklahoma City Planning Commission. I would assume that this discussion goes on in every single city that there is in America. Where do you put these towers? What's good? I know Cole Gardens, I've been to a couple of weddings there, it's like Nick said, it was specifically, totally organized, and zoned for one singular purpose, and that purpose has seemed to me to be, you know, well-placed, and well-done. I don't see, and then when you said, "Well, we tried the Cowboy Hall of Fame." Oh, great, let's put a big old pole, you know, come on. I would like to see that this not even be presented until you extinguish every opportunity that there is south of I-44 in that other area, and show us that it doesn't work for the area you want to cover. Because I can't support this application as it is, and I think that's because I'm too dumb to really understand the technology. I don't know it. But I do know what a 100-foot pole is in the middle of a place where you're gonna have a wedding.
Of course, the Cole's Garden is the less or, so they're the ones, I think, in their activities most, in fact, but to answer your question in a couple of ways, number one, this will be a tower, or co-location will be possible, and your approval of this would allow, or diminish, let me take that back, your approval of this application would diminish the need for more towers anywhere in that area. And that's, the height is an issue because of that?
No, no, I...
So I think it's important to understand that, it's not just, SBA is not, AT&amp;T is the initial less E, but there will be other companies. So they're not like one company coming in saying, "We're trying to beat out Verizon and beat out all these other companies by getting this tower in." This tower, SBA leases to all carriers.
No, we understand that. Well, our problem is, and your map pretty much demonstrates it, we're not suggesting that there's not a need for coverage here. We see it.
No.
What I'm suggesting to you is, I don't believe this is the proper location, and I think it can slide maybe a little west, for example, there's a military operation not far, there, I believe, fairly amenable to these type of things. That's gotta be within the search ring. I don't know if you looked there or not, south of the highway, it appears to me would work. Again, I'm, my RF engineering degree is somewhat lacking, but just looking at the area, it's not that there's not a need. I don't think anyone on this commission is suggesting that. What I'm suggesting is, I'm not satisfied that this location, I think your guy found O2 zoning, had him in sight, he went and cut a deal on an after-the-fact basis, discovered, "Oh my gosh, I'm in violation of a PUD, so I'm gonna back into this deal." That's what I'm seeing here.
May I suggest then, with the Commissioner's comments, that we do continue the case, we have no objection, make sure the RF engineer is here to address your questions, one way or the other, either in disagreement or agreement with you all. Maybe explore sites down there in the meantime, if he thinks, if he thinks it'll work, and we'll have him explore them. The neighborhood, I know meets on December 13th in their general meeting, we'd be happy to be there, and we would have answers for them probably, what's today, the 8th?
I'd like to...
Answers maybe for them on that issue, but come back, because it really, we intended to have the RF engineer, we were driving down here and got an email that she got caught up and couldn't be here.
Well, no, I understand that, but the RF engineer's not the person, the site selection person either. And I would encourage you to use this time, you know, the letter's very detailed, we've built a good argument against the two sites that are cited in the letter. There are other sites there, and whether they've been explored or not, if they haven't been, I would encourage them to explore them, and not like the little guy that comes and knocks on your door, and he's shy, and he's looking down at your shoes, and says, "Mister, you don't wanna buy any of this stuff, do you?" But make a concerted effort to find a good location for this, because I believe there has to be one.
I thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioners, before we consider any action, there are four people who signed up to speak, and I think we need to find out if they'd like to speak today, if they're agreeable to a continuance, if they're not, and want to express themselves today. They certainly made the trip down here and have, I wanna give them that opportunity. The four of you who've signed up know who you are. Are you willing to come back on the 12th of January, when the applicant will return? If you'd pull the microphone down and give us your name and address, please.
Yes, thank you. I'm Mary Overall. I'm a resident of the Pusseyman Hill neighborhood area, and I live at 1111 Northeast 64th. I've been there for 30 years, and I'm currently serving as president of the Neighborhood Association. And I thank you, first of all, for allowing me to come before you and speak our concerns about this issue. I won't address the issues related to us not being able to connect for a meeting, but there was the effort to do so. But I do have a paper trail, and I have date trails, that sort of thing. But the future that we stand for is one that we want to ensure that there's effective change, we're all advocates for change, and we support change within our neighborhood. But part of that future change does not include the type of tower that has been described here today. That tower would be right in the center of the residential area that we live in. We have approximately 153, well, 153, well, they're actually, let me describe it, 153 residential lots is what they're referred to. Those lots average about 2.4 acres per land area. We have, we're bounded by west, on the west side by Kelly, the north side by Britton Road, the east side by Martin Luther King, and the south side by northeast 63rd. And we've witnessed a lot of positive changes since I've been there, and as I said, we're all advocates for change, and we have received a couple of grants from the City of Oklahoma City to beautify our neighborhood. We're currently in the process of putting in decorative lightings to ensure that that area continues to maintain the characteristics that it's known to have. And part of the concerns, again, that we have is that if that tower is placed in the center of the neighborhood, and number one, the residents that were, that immediately surround that area were not notified in a timely sort of way. The letter came to a neighbor, calls went out and questioned whether or not that notification had occurred, and it did not occur. So there was somewhat of a violation or a difference there in terms of what the requirements and the standards are for notification when this kind of an event is going to take place, or project is going to take place in the neighborhood.
You now do have constructive notice, though, because this has been going on for a number of months, so at least now you're all aware.
Well, yes, we are, but I just wanted to point that out to you.
That's fine.
We're also concerned about the aesthetic quality of our neighborhood. We have certain characteristics that we want to maintain. This, of course, is going to be quite different, and it's going to violate the beauty standards that we have identified. There are several, we've been a very attractive neighborhood. People have come in and sought a land area to build multi-million dollar homes in the area because of the attractiveness. We have a wonderful museum that's in our neighborhood. We're concerned about the number of people who come nationally, from national, international locations to visit the National Western Museum and Cowboy Hall of Fame. When they enter and exit, the first thing they're going to see is this humongous tower that's standing there, and it's not a very attractive site from our perspective. Some of the categories that we're concerned about, that issues fall into, we're concerned about some of the strategic initiatives that we have identified as a neighborhood association, bounded by those areas that I talked about. We're concerned about the profile of the neighborhood. Individuals who now are attracted to the area will not be, will not want to be attracted to the area because of this defacement that potentially will occur. We're concerned, again, about this being a historical district, and it's been designated, as was stated earlier, as an urban conservation area, and we'd like to ensure that that is maintained. And we are really one of the oldest neighborhoods in the Oklahoma City area, and we certainly want to keep the characteristics of our neighborhood intact. We're concerned about property values and the decrease in those property values, and because of the changes in the characteristics of our neighborhood, we're concerned, again, about the original pud, and the narrowness of that pud, and that to rezone would certainly refute or violate that initial pud. We talked about some general concerns that was addressed by Mr. LaFonte. We're concerned about the environment and the contamination issues that have been addressed, yet they have not been substantiated by evidence-based research, but that research is going on. And until those, that has been substantiated, we'd like to continue to identify those as concerns. There's the interference that we've, through our research, that shows that it can have interference with other kinds of receptions in the neighborhood, and that was not addressed as part of the presentation. When you look at the creation of the electromagnetic fields and the emission, that is of concern to our health, and it becomes a public health concern. And CDC has provided a great deal of research information regarding that particular area. We're also concerned about the biological concerns of our neighbors, the children that are there, and the continued emission of the electromagnetic, well, the emission of those rays, or whatever we wanna refer to them as being. The health risks are there, but, and the research is ongoing from various organizations, and we'd like to at least address some of those things, especially as it relates to cancer and some of the other kinds of things. The characteristics of the tower, I mean, this is, we're talking something that's going to hover very, very high in the middle of our neighborhood. And from that perspective, we'd like to have, we want a little bit more discussion, and for the SBA to address some of those concerns that we had, and more importantly, to refute some of those concerns. But the most important thing is, we were concerned that there was not given consideration to these other areas that we spoke of that are south of I-45, that we perceive to be an excellent location for consideration, rather than in the center of our residential area. We also talked with the Neighborhood Alliance, and the Neighborhood Alliance is really opposed to having cell towers in the center of residential communities, and we do have support from them. And we have support from other individuals that I think are significant in terms of opposing the rezoning of this area for the purpose of a cell tower. And thank you so much for...
Just one question before you step away. You have a Neighborhood Association meeting upcoming?
On the 12th, no, the 13th of December.
And would you welcome the applicant to come and address you?
Certainly.
Well, we would encourage that that occur, and maybe some of the concerns can be talked through, and hopefully, at least some of them resolved before you're back here on the 12th.
Absolutely. And that has been an offer of ours, the reason that we could not, we don't normally develop or encourage emergency meetings of our Neighborhood Association. We do have a fixed schedule, so that we can encourage the maximum participation in our Neighborhood Association. And to create or design an emergency meeting was not possible during the period that has been addressed.
That's mine, I'm concerned with that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now, three other people had signed up. Do you wanna speak today? If you do, I would ask that you cover something not already discussed. We had quite a, quite a good coverage from Ms. Overall.
Thank you very much. My name is Dwayne Mass. I live at 1721 Northeast 63rd. If you look at the map off 63rd Street, I'm, would be in the brightest of the orange areas. I'm much like, I have a comment much like others, I had heard one other comment earlier about coverage, I have two teenage daughters, and both have AT&amp;T, and if there was the slightest skip in coverage, I've known about it the past three years. So our cell phones work pretty good in that area. So our cell phones work pretty good in that area. So that concerns me a bit. But what I am most concerned about, it is that a beautiful neighborhood. When we moved in from Arcadia from a farm, my wife had great advice for me. She said, "Go to our favorite place in town where we want to live, and let's build a home there." And we did. And I'm thinking about, the tallest tree in our neighborhood is 40 feet, probably on my place. And I think about a tower 60 feet, standing 60 feet taller than these trees. And I think about the one neighborhood in town that two to three times a week, if not a day, a tour bus comes through. And the people in those tour buses see one neighborhood in Oklahoma City only. They see one neighborhood. That's the Persimmon Hill neighborhood. When you come out of the Cowboy Hall of Fame, a place I love, when you come out of the National Cowboy and Western Heritage Museum, and you look at that rolling vista to your north, the soft, the burr oaks and all the beautiful trees, and then you look softly to your left and see 60 feet above the tallest tree in the neighborhood, a cell tower popping up. All of us in our neighborhood love it, and we covet the environment we have and the aesthetics that are ongoing and the setting for some of the best things that are in this city. In my opinion, one of the very best. And that is the wonderful, wonderful Western Heritage Museum. My concerns are that are mostly aesthetics and the character of our neighborhood and the perception of our city from those who I spoke of, who see just honestly one neighborhood in this town. And that is the Persimmon Hill neighborhood. Thank you all very much, and happy holidays.
Thank you. And I thought you were going to ask us to reduce coverage, but that's okay.
I might say that, but my daughters might.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else? Well, we're going to continue the, oh, okay. One more. Again, cover something new for us?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm Roberta Smith, and I'm secretary of the Persimmon Hill Neighborhood Association. And first of all, I want to say, I get coverage all over the neighborhood, and we have computer service. And the other thing I want to say is, this is a deed to my property. It's 1904, it's signed by Teddy Roosevelt. And I'm really passionate about our neighborhood. I know all the neighbors and all of my friends. And I really want to say that I thank you for really listening to us. I thank you for remembering all the very hard work that we did for Cole's Garden. And it was to such an extreme, there are not even any telephone poles in front of Cole's Garden, just for the aesthetics of it. And all I am going to say is that we certainly appreciate you. We appreciate your time. We appreciate your wisdom. And I thank you so much for knowing the history of this pad and really having such a heart for our neighborhood. And I thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you. One of the things the municipal councilors just advised me of is that, under federal law, we're not allowed to look at environmental concerns when we consider these tower applications. That's federal law, just so we're all aware. Thank you all for being here today. Thank you for your patience. And.
Do you need a motion?
I'll take a motion.
Motion.
Mr. Fortun, yes.
Completely brief rebuttal. One thing I didn't mention in my presentation, I would like on the record, it is a nice neighborhood. It is semi-rural. Homes are nice, the people are nice. But there is something I failed to mention. There is a broadcast tower farm, many, many, many broadcast towers. I don't know how high they are, but they're very, very high. So this would not be something not already applicable as a use in that area. And the coverage thing, you've heard that so many times, they come and say, "My cellphone works just great up there." Mine did for a while, but it doesn't mean that the engineers who are experts in this area aren't telling the truth.
Right. Understood.
I move for attendance at this next meeting in January 2nd.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue item 14 to January 12th. Cast your votes. And we will take a 10-minute recess.
All right, commissioners, we are back on the record. And we are on item fifteen, which is a comprehensive plan amendment for Lincoln Plaza at forty-three, forty-five North Lincoln Boulevard. This is in support of PUD fourteen forty-nine, which the commission will hear in February. And Sarah Welch from my office is here to give us a little overview of why we're proposing this amendment in support of the PUD. Sarah?
Hi, Sarah Welch, Planning Department. Like Russell stated, I'm here to discuss item fifteen, which is an amendment to the comprehensive plan land use map. We're here because the Planning Department received a request to rezone a property at forty-three, forty-five North Lincoln Boulevard. The uses proposed in that development are student housing, multifamily residential, retail, and related uses. Those uses are not consistent with the land use designation that exists there now, which is standard industrial. And so we requested that the applicant submit a request for us to review not that property to see what a more appropriate land use designation would be. We also took the opportunity then to expand the area that we looked at beyond just the location of the proposed PUD. So just to familiarize ourselves, the area that we looked at is the standard industrial area. That's bound by I forty-four in the north and northeast Thirty-fourth Street on the south, and then between Lincoln Boulevard and Broadway Extension. The PUD location I've highlighted here in blue. And what we're proposing is to redesignate a portion of the standard industrial land use designation to urban development. The area that we're proposing to change is highlighted here in dark blue. And just kind of as a summary, so you can see why we decided that that should be the boundary, is I'd like to just briefly run through a couple of things. One would be the uses that exist with inside that boundary now. And I'll just quickly go through these. Well, I'm sorry, first, just to give you an idea of the size, two-hundred-and-sixty acres is what would be redesignated. Inside the boundary, there is residential uses and hospitality. We have office uses. There's educational uses, retail, commercial, and parking. There's some government uses. And then as I fill this last portion in, you'll see a few industrial parcels, and the remainder of it is mostly vacant parcels, and then some open space and the right-of-way. We also looked at the zoning that exists in the area now. Again, the proposed amendment area is highlighted in blue. You'll see Lincoln Boulevard is zoned right now mostly C-three, there's some office uses to the north. The commercial zoning is more appropriate, we feel, for urban development than it would be for standard industrial. Also, Lincoln Boulevard, as was actually stated earlier, is an appearance corridor. It's also a major activity corridor. And the comprehensive plan actually does specify the area that uses appropriate along a major activity corridor would be: mixed uses, multifamily residential, commercial, and office. So what we're requesting is that we would move that boundary so we could incorporate some existing properties that are better suited for urban development. And then we feel like the new designation would promote development that's more in line and consistent with the appearance corridor and major activity corridor guidelines. Our recommendation is that we would approve the amendment, which would change the land use designation from standard industrial to urban development, and so that our new land use map would look like this. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So the area that we're looking at in yellow, Sarah, would be the...
The new, so it would go... I guess, I'm sorry, what's your question, Commissioner?
What I'm looking at right now, the staff recommendation, the area in yellow would then be amended?
The area... We are requesting to change the land use amendment, and if that is approved, then this is what it would look like. On your presentation...
This is the after scenario.
This is the after.
So the before scenario would be gray within south of forty-four and west of Lincoln.
So we're wrapping around to Broadway?
Yes.
This is the before. I put the before up. And then the after would extend the urban development area. We tried to keep it consistent so that it would link the north and south boundaries of urban development, and then include these uses that are not necessarily standard industrial.
Okay, good. I understand. Questions, commissioners, of Sarah?
No. I'll move approval of the application.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve a request for the amendment to the plan. Cast your votes. And it's approved. Nick?
Thank you.
Not voting? Okay, we're good. Thank you.
Item sixteen has been continued until February. Item seventeen is C sixty-three fifteen, a final plat of Stone Mill Manor in Ward Seven.
Good afternoon. Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates representing the applicant, who's also here, Mr. David Yost, and Joyce Brown's with him. This is a final plat of the preliminary that you all have already approved. During the design of the final plat, we discovered that there is enough grade falling from east to west across this site that it did not allow us to extend public sewer at a depth that would be serviceable to the west portion of this plat. So what we've done is redesigned the plat slightly. We've reduced the number of lots. We're still within that ten percent variation between preliminary and final. And so you can see, the lots on the west side became larger to allow for aerobic septic. Or we are, as part of the sewer that will serve the east side of that street, we are going to extend laterals across, so if they want to put in a private lift station for a home, they can do that and tie to it. The staff evaluation includes several TEs, of which we agree with all of them. We are also requesting two variances. TE number three talks about the variance for the radius, which was approved as part of the preliminary plat. And then TE number four is the new variance that allows for us to have the aerobic or septic type system for the west lots.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are we talking about just those five lots?
Yes, sir, the five lots that are larger than the rest of them.
Thank you.
No one has signed up, commissioners? We have two variances.
I move approval of the variance on TE number three.
A motion and a second to approve the variance on TE three. Cast your votes. That's approved.
I move the variance, approval of the variance on TE number four.
A motion and a second to approve the variance, TE four. Cast your votes.
And I move approval of the application.
Motion and a second to approve item seventeen. Cast your votes. And you're approved.
Thank you very much.
Item eighteen is SPUD six forty-five, an application by the Toby Keith Foundation with Kraft and Toll and Associates to rezone eight eighteen, northeast Eighth Street, from PUD thirteen sixty-seven to SPUD six forty-five in Ward Seven.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Gray with Kraft and Toll. Here representing the applicant. Thank you for your time. I wanted to give you a brief introduction to our project. It's located northeast Eighth in Laird. And we are proposing to rezone to an SPUD, an existing PUD. The purpose of this rezoning is, there is a new project being proposed called the OK Kids Corral. This is a lodging facility that will house families who have children that have cancer that are getting treatment. And the reason we are coming in with the request is because the current PUD does not allow... It has restrictions on parking that are incompatible with proposed lodging use, and the signage requirements are too restrictive, and we're looking for some more latitude. And those signage requirements are within the policies that you all have already adopted. The architect is here to address any questions that you may have about the building, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Let me ask you a question regarding the toll development site. Is this replacing the proposed hotel that they were going to put there? Are there still plans for the hotel?
I believe the property you're referring to is over on Phillips, just to the west. And this piece, to my knowledge, has not been proposed for the hotel.
Okay. I move approval of the application if there's no protest.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item eighteen. Cast your votes. And you're approved. Thank you.
Item nineteen is C sixty-three fourteen, a preliminary plat of Still Meadows Phase Two in Ward Eight.
Good afternoon. Kendall Dillon with Kraft and Toll, representing the applicant. And I also have the applicant, Mr. Dusty Born, with me, in case you have any questions of him. Obviously, this is a preliminary plat application. The preliminary plat for the Still Meadows addition was approved back in nineteen ninety-nine. And with that approval, there were three-hundred-and-seventy-six lots. Most of the lots were in the sixty-five-hundred, seventy-five-hundred square foot range, fifty-five, sixty-five-foot lots, with a density of about four dwelling units per acre. So that was approved back in nineteen ninety-nine. After that, they actually started construction and brought the final plat of Section One before you. With that, they actually come in with considerably larger lots. So they come in and build, I think, one-hundred-and-thirty-nine lots with the first section. Those lots were typically eighty feet wide, neighborhood of nine-thousand, ninety-five-hundred square feet, something like that. But since then, the preliminary plat has expired back in two thousand and seven, thus our application today. The preliminary plat that you have before you today obviously encompasses what was the remainder of the Still Meadows, the previous preliminary plat. But even in addition to that, there is fifteen acres in what is the southwest corner down there that is fifteen acres that was not previously included into that plat. But you can see by our application that we are being consistent with the way that Section One was built, in the sense of our lot sizes. We are... All of our lots are basically eighty-five, ninety-foot lots. We're ten thousand, fourteen thousand square feet, so that it's basically the same or a little bit larger than what was actually plotted with Section One. We are in agreement with all the TEs, and with that, I'll just try to answer any questions as yet.
We do have a couple of people signed up, commissioners. We'll hear from them. If you'd give us your name and address for the record, please.
Jim Kersey, one-hundred-and-fifty-fourth, one-hundred-and-sixtieth Street. I'm up there right on the center quadrant of the south boundary, where the old meets the new. We had a meeting, and the developers have convinced us this is a pretty good plan, and we don't disagree with any of it. But my biggest concern today is drainage, and you guys have talked drainage probably more than one or two opportunities here. But he's got one-hundred-and-thirty-nine units draining down through the two streets, if you look at the drawing. Basically, there's a big ditch on the south boundary separating the new from the old, Phase Two, Phase One. We just want to make sure that the development, as it progresses, will handle the runoff off of our property, the Phase One areas, into the Phase Two and on south, as they develop towards Galardia, which is just below this, right off the map. And my constituent here, he's concerned, as we all are, about traffic. And the developers are going to bring in all the traffic, as you see, from two entries that exists in Phase One to serve Phase Two. Proposal from the developer is to have a temporary entrance at that southern, that northwestern cul-de-sac, where he'll bring in his construction operations through that big lot. And we like that. We just want to make sure that he follows through on that, because that will help us tremendously, the residents. But my point really is just the concern, and it's only Phase One, so he may not have addressed all the runoff conditions. I don't think the Phase One has any underground storm drainage at all. Let's assume the Phase Two won't either. But he may have already addressed that. I'll let my neighbor pick up the other part, which is a similar concern, and it has to do with traffic as opposed to storm drainage.
It's refreshing to hear somebody be concerned about runoff from their property onto somebody else. It's usually the reverse that we hear. Thank you. It'd be Mr. Bumgardner?
My name is Bart Bumgardner. I'm at fifty-seven zero four, northwest one-hundred-and-sixtieth Street. I like to refer to the... You look at the black maps, kind of like, almost like in Oklahoma, if you look at like the Panhandle, kind of coming down. One-hundred-and-sixtieth Street, I'm about half, I'm probably like three-quarters of the way down. If you look at MacArthur, coming off of the one-hundred-and-sixtieth Street, I'm on that main street. And as Jim said, I'm very concerned about the traffic. When you look at the neighborhoods that have been built to the west of us, all of those empty on to MacArthur. I'm envisioning a neighborhood, when you look at all these lots that spill into one-hundred-and-sixtieth, and then they also go back, and I'm sorry, I need to look at the... When you look at Still Meadows Drive, the back street, all the traffic is going to go mainly on to northwest one-hundred-and-sixtieth Street. Being someone that has three children, and also knows of several bus stops that are on that street, there's also a handicapped child that plays on that street, there's going to be a lot of traffic coming in and out of that street once his development takes place. When you look at the amount of homes that are going to empty out onto that, coming out of that one entrance, we're going to have cars backed up there. It's already backed up, in some cases, in the morning, just to get on to MacArthur, based on the traffic that comes out of the western neighborhood. So that is one primary concern that I have, that is just the amount of traffic that will be going up and down those streets, and how fast the traffic already moves right now. I mean, I'm in my front yard many a times yelling at people to slow down. A lot of the driveways on that one-hundred-and-sixtieth slope down into the street. So you know how it is, kid drops a ball, rolls out in the street. It only takes one time to have a tragedy in these neighborhoods, and with increased traffic coming out of there, that is a concern. Something that the developer, Four Corners, has proposed is that they would have a construction entrance, which I think is an excellent idea. The last thing I want is huge trucks going up and down our street, leaving tons of mud and debris, nails, who knows what else, that obviously kids could end up getting their feet stuck on, cars getting flat tires. The question that I have, and I don't know how it would work or not, but on one-hundred-and-sixtieth Street, where you look at the so-called tip of Oklahoma, or this little Panhandle thing I'm referring to, he has one lot that I know that he is... When I say he, that Four Corners wants to make into a model home, so obviously you can see it from MacArthur. One thing he has met with our neighborhood before, and I will disclose, I'm actually on the board for Still Meadows. I'm just... We have five board members. I am one of those. At our entrance, we've had a proposal that Four Corners would help us possibly redo that entrance, as forming a partnership with us, with this new area of homes that is coming into Still Meadows One. I mean, a lot of people in this neighborhood moved into this believing they would have twenty-five-hundred square foot homes. Our Four Corners has not said that they're going to build twenty-five-hundred square foot homes, but he wouldn't say... Oh, excuse me, he said he might, but he didn't say that he would build all of them that way. He wants to put a minimum of two thousand square foot homes. It really doesn't matter, probably, in this juncture of what I'm here for today. But on the entrance, though, if he's going to do a construction entrance, something that I have at least just a thought on, is if you look at northwest one-hundred-and-fifty-ninth Court, and how it goes into that, you know, obviously that court area, and you have one-hundred-and-sixtieth Street, is if... When you see, like, right when you come off of northwest one-hundred-and-sixtieth Street, it would be to the west lot, it has a number one there, that lot is unbuilt on. It's a very small lot. It's right behind the entrance of this neighborhood. And a proposal that I want to have noted is that is there a way that possibly we could tie one-hundred-and-fifty-ninth Court, make that into a street that ties on to northwest one-hundred-and-sixtieth Street? It would still come in off of MacArthur, but have it so that when this traffic starts to come through with this new neighborhood, that some of that pressure will be relieved on northwest one-hundred-and-fifty-ninth Court, so that we don't have everything coming down one-hundred-and-sixtieth Street. Because even if his new neighborhood went down Still Meadows Drive out to one-hundred-and-sixty-fourth Street, they're not going to turn right. Because if you turn right and go back to the east, there's a Deer Creek Elementary School there, there's a school zone. People are legit... Are not going to go through a school zone when they're trying to get to work, all the way down to Portland, come back up Portland, and then back on to Lake Efnor Parkway. They're going to go down MacArthur. It's going to create a traffic nightmare through our neighborhood, especially on northwest one-hundred-and-sixtieth Street. And also, it's going to occur on Still Meadows Drive, because they're going to go down Still Meadows Drive, they're going to come down the backside of the neighborhood, and then come back up, possibly Scissor Tail. So to me, it's going to increase the risk of a lot of speeding, traffic issues, and so on in our neighborhood. So again, I would want to see if there's any way to try to develop some type of road that can come into one-hundred-and-fifty-ninth in his neighborhood from one-hundred-and-sixtieth. I don't know what the legality of that is. I'm not a lawyer by any means. But it's just an idea that I had, looking at this map, that if we're going to redo that entrance anyways, which he had mentioned he may do for our neighborhood upon this going forward, that it would be an idea to consider. The other thing that was brought up by other neighbor here is that when you look at the black line there, just like directly north of one-hundred-and-sixtieth Street, that first black line, where we claim the water is going to go in, behind my home, pretend like that black line is a fence line that goes all the way out to MacArthur. When it rains a lot, you will see a lot of water that will collect in that area. There is, right now, no underground stored, I mean, storm drains. If another home goes on there, what is going to happen to that area? Is it going to have more water or less? You know, I did mention this to the Four Corners developers at an HOA meeting that they came to, and they said they were going to look into it. So I want to know that it is... So I want to know that it is looked into before this is granted approval, to know what is, what is the, you know, how much water is actually going down this area? Because there is an area that's like kind of a round ditch-like area that all this water spills into right before MacArthur. So I think there are concerns of drainage in my area, especially as more homes are being built, and how it's going to affect that drainage that's already there right now. Because after a rainstorm, I can see standing water there, and during a rainstorm, you can see it flowing to the west. Just want to check on that. Really, beyond that, that's, that's the main thing that I wanted to touch on, was just the basis of the traffic. You know, we're talking of one hundred and seventy potential homes that are going to go down that one hundred and sixtieth street. I believe it's going to put many of the children in danger, it's going to make a lot of the other residents in Steel Meadows One have to put up with traffic, and not to mention Steel Meadows Two. What if there was an emergency? How are we all going to get out of that street? I don't know. If there's other things that have been shown to have worked, but those are some things that I think need to be looked at before much of this is, you know, granted to move forward.
Well, storm sewers will be required, I mean, those will have to be constructed. I really can't imagine you don't have storm sewers in Phase One. Do we know?
You guys know if there are? Are there some along the road that actually spills into? I don't know if he wants to answer that or not, but when, behind the house, let's just say the previous neighborhood that I lived in, they had like a concrete ditch that the water went down. I mean, right now-
That's different from storm sewers.
Okay, there's not one of those right now behind-
You're talking about a culvert?
Yes.
Yeah.
So-
There would be, there would not be a culvert there.
It's just going to remain grass and dirt?
Well, I'm not engineering it, but-
That's all I just want to look into, that's-
I just wanted to make clear for you, there will be storm sewers in this phase.
Okay.
I can't tell you without going back in the record to see what's in Phase One, I don't know.
Okay.
And-
In regards to the traffic, can you comment on that?
In regards to the traffic, I'm just looking at a very difficult layout. I don't see any way that one hundred and fifty-ninth street could turn north in Lot One of Phase One and then hook into one hundred and sixtieth street. Cars couldn't queue up on either street conveniently, you'd have, there's not enough space there for anything to happen. There may be some other solution, but I don't know what it would be.
You do, you do see that there are tie-ins at Cattail Drive and Steel Meadows Drive.
But it's all going on to MacArthur. I mean, where's that traffic going to go, ma'am, when, once they come out and go to the culvert?
But when you were talking about tying one hundred and fifty-ninth to one hundred and sixtieth, I mean, you see that it is tied in two different places there.
But it's still, that, that's, when you come in off of MacArthur and go down one hundred and sixtieth street, I mean, you're going to go into the Cattail lane and turn right there. I'm just saying that that, that street is going to receive a lot of traffic, and it could potentially back all the way up to Cattail, if not farther, on a seven-thirty AM rush to work. Because it's not easy to get out on a MacArthur already with the traffic you're going to get from the other neighborhoods that are, that are north and also wind rush.
I understand that, and I agree that that's maybe even likely, but I don't think that it would be helped or alleviated by trying to put a third tie-in so close to MacArthur.
But I'm not saying to have a tie-in to MacArthur, I'm saying tie-in to one hundred and sixtieth.
No, you said a tie-in, but I don't think, I don't think that would alleviate-
If he did-
-the traffic flow at all.
I suggest that what you might want to do is talk to our traffic engineering staff with this layout in mind, and ask them what suggestions they might have. I mean, maybe even in signalization on MacArthur, one hundred and sixtieth is an option of some sort, I don't know.
And again, it just kind of hit me as I was sitting, there's an idea. I don't know how feasible it is, but when you look at how landlocked this neighborhood is going to be, I mean, they can't go out, there's no other way to build an exit except through Steel Meadows Phase One.
I, I see that.
And I mean, that's the concern.
I just don't know how to fix it, but you might talk to our traffic engineering staff and our traffic commission and see if there's some help for you there.
I have a couple of questions, combined of perhaps the applicant and our staff. I see that there's no stub in the neighborhood to the east, and so no way to tie in. And I wonder, is that area developed fully, and is there no way to tie in there?
Kendall, do you want to come to the microphone?
Is that really not an issue, an option?
It's owned by someone else.
Sure, specifically in regards to that issue, the subdivision, which is Lone Oak on the east, is completely built. There was no, they were there first, there was no stub, so there's no place to go.
Why would there be no stubs? Why we didn't require that? Do you own the property either to the north or to the southwest of this?
No, ma'am.
So there's not, there's not an option there for another ingress, knee-grass?
No. Especially in regards to the issue of traffic, a couple of things I think that is important to keep in mind is obviously, it's expired, but the previous preliminary plat had three hundred and seventy-six lots. Even if you take what we're proposing with this preliminary plat and combine it with Section One, you end up with three hundred and nine lots. So we're sixty-seven lots less coming out of the gate than what it, you know, the previous preliminary plat. Also, one hundred and sixtieth street, if you look at it, that's actually a divided and a boulevard that extends all the way to, you know, currently to, to the east and to our plat. Then the other street, Steel Meadows Drive, is designed as a collector, and then again, there's that other stub to the south. So, you know, if you look at the thing as a whole, it meets a subdivision, regulations in terms of access, you look at what we're actually collectively proposing now versus what the previous preliminary plat was, we're sixty-seven lots less, thus less traffic than what was originally intended. And then you look at that boulevard entrance and the collector, I just, I think the traffic. In regards to his request about connecting up the two streets, number one, the queuing's a problem, but number two, we don't own Lot One, so therefore, we have no rights to that anyways, so.
Kendall, tell me again, the boulevard on one hundred and sixtieth street goes-
Correct.
How far?
It goes the length of what's currently built.
Okay, so it goes all the way over to the dotted line, the black dotted line, okay.
Kendall, on the, you've already said, this, in this plat is all the land you control. I heard that. But this is a really unusual configuration in what the gentleman speaking just referred to as the Panhandle of Oklahoma up there, immediately south of that. Is there any consideration of acquiring that land to square this up? I mean, it makes, from a development standpoint, I'm thinking, it makes no sense for the guy below to try to develop it. It does make sense for you to try to develop it.
As far as, I can't speak definitively to what efforts have been made. However, it's my understanding, I think a church currently owns that site, and I think that they do have some sort of a plan, but at this point in time, I don't think the possibility of us acquiring that's possible.
And I don't believe a church owns that, there's a resident that lives there.
We've got the applicant here, so we'll put him at your, here now.
Another question, Kendall. We had one big plat before, and apparently it expired, what you said.
Correct.
Is this to say, is this, this is a new developer also, isn't it?
It, it will be, yes.
So what safeguards do the people in Phase One have in relation to what the other developer You know, covenants? Architectural committee, that sort of thing? That was formed with the idea of covering this whole plat. Now you're taking roughly fifty percent of it and changing it. Is this developer willing to, to live by the same covenants and same restrictions as the, that were set up for the whole thing?
Your client's here, can you-
That's what I was getting ready to say. He's been, Mr. Bourne has actually been working with the Homeowner Association of Steel Meadows, so if he wouldn't mind, he can kind of address that issue and where they're at with that.
You know, I see where basically-
Mr. Bumgardner, would you give us that poll, please?
Oh yeah, absolutely, but I, I may want to respond to what he says.
Well, we'll give you a chance. Don't go all the way back, good, thank you.
Dusty Bourne, six-one-eight-zero, Boucher Drive in Edmund, Oklahoma is the address. Officially, the name of the development company is Meadows Sixty-One Development LLC is the development company we're developing that under. We're better known as Four Corners Homes, that's the company that we operate under mostly for our building and construction. So with that, I'll kind of open it up to questions, do you all, we have-
Well, the first question is, the property that would square off your site, have you made any effort to acquire that, and do you know who owns it?
We haven't made any effort. I don't know what the price for that would be, but currently, it's not in the development model of, of the deal structure that we put together with the existing owner of what is highlighted there. You can see there's one small home there, I'm not for sure if all of that is owned by one single person, but there is a residence there that's being lived in, and I believe that that is owned by two separate individuals, a piece by the church and a piece by the residents there. I think there's actually two tracts of land there. I'm not for certain on that, though.
Okay, and as to Mr. Gale's question about covenants, which originally, which cover Steel Meadows Phase One, and were originally anticipated to cover the entire tract, would you be willing to extend the covenants to this area being developed? Have you considered that?
Yeah, we have, actually. I've met with the HOA president a couple of times, and a couple of members of the board of the HOA, and with their attorney that represents them, because they're having some problems with their covenants restrictions as they stand currently. Had several meetings, and then also went to their annual meeting just a few weeks ago to address the entire HOA, and we are willing to abide by about eighty-five to ninety percent of their covenants restrictions. We are requesting to change, and are going to change, a few of those covenants restrictions and guidelines.
Go ahead, what are you changing?
Basically, we're going to be keeping with the eighty percent brick and stone, we're going to be going to a thirty-year laminate roof shingle instead of a forty-year laminate roof shingle. We're going to be doing pure and grade beam foundations versus a traditional footing and stem wall foundation system. Probably the biggest, the exterior is going to be eighty percent brick or stone or masonry. Fencing is going to be abide by the same covenants that they have. Probably the biggest kind of point of contention is, we want to reduce the square foot size down to a minimum of two thousand square feet from what they have currently written in their covenants restrictions of twenty-five hundred square feet. I think that's probably the biggest point of contention between what our plans are and what their plans are. We fully intend to build, these are ninety-foot lots, in Phase One, they're only eighty-foot lots. We originally met with them with a plan of seventy-foot lots, and we went back and kind of redeveloped it, and decided to come back with ninety-foot lots and do a bigger lot, and make that a little bit more space. So we don't have a plan to, to build small homes on these large lots, but we did feel like it was good planning to reduce that down to two thousand square foot.
Why? You know, I'm assuming I can get a twenty-five hundred foot minimum on an eighty-foot lot, you're doing ninety, so why do you need a smaller, about two thousand foot house?
In case I need to build a two thousand square foot house? I mean, that's, I want to be real honest, I mean, that's, we, we want to, and let me also say that in part of our meetings with the HOA board, we've agreed to enhance their existing amenities that they have. They have requested new streetlights to be installed, we're going to be doing that. They've requested that we do some shades and some sails and pergolas around their swimming pool, we're going to be doing that. They requested that we enhance the front entryway, we're going to be working with their architecture committee to do that. We've also already built six homes, and we have five more under construction in Phase One of this neighborhood. So we've actively been building in this neighborhood for over a year and a half now, working with the architecture committee and working with them. But we feel that this development on Phase One, or our next development, we want to be able to have a little bit more leeway on a two thousand square foot home. Everything we've built to date has been an average of about three thousand square foot, and that's what the development plan calls for.
Again, the plan calls for three thousand, I want the flexibility to build two. That seems like a conflict to me. You know, I really don't care, I mean, we're not in the covenant business here.
God, it's really not our issue as a planning commissioner.
Right, Rob, with all due respect-
I do care about the, the circulation here, I believe is a problem, but I don't know how to fix it. And it is consistent with the other, other plat.
May I make a comment about what you're, on, this is about the amenities and what this development's going to look like? I know that, Kendall, you're probably aware of our planning commissioners, the commission's policy that we adopted on garage fronts, and you have a notation, you're going to put one or two trees, and, and do you know about that policy? Do you know what's available to put the garage fronts in back of the entrance and back and forth, do you know all about that?
Right. In regards to the garage front, obviously, we're kind of duplicating obviously what was done in Section One, but we've looked at your policy. If you'll notice, we've got short blocks, we're agreeing to the right-of-way trees, given that the utility department will agree to, or permit us to put those in. I think also the other consideration that's in your policy that we really have here is we have probably twenty-five feet of fall from north to south, and then same thing from east to west. So I think if you look at the right-of-way trees, you look at the elevation change and the short blocks, that's three things that I think we qualify for even under your garage front policy.
You know, I just like to ask the question because we have no teeth in that policy at all, but I'd like to make sure that maybe the developers really do know why that was adopted. And the reason is, you have a whole row of garage fronts, and I agree, elevation. But my basic problem is, and I can't get around this, is the traffic pattern that goes on one street out. I really have a real big problem with, with how the circulation goes, and it's on this street.
Okay, I understand-
This is a troubling thing.
... but I think if you look at this in the sense of, number one, does the whole thing collectively meet your access requirements? The answer is yes. Now, there was a purpose and a design from the start that basically still incorporated the same area that we're designing, and the preliminary plat, which obviously is expired, included more lots than what we've got today, so thus more traffic on the same exact streets. This, it was designed as a boulevard entrance coming in and a collector, obviously, to handle that traffic. So in terms of what we're talking about today, now, obviously, the deal with the covenants restrictions and those sort of things are legal questions that are above what I can answer today, their answers between two parties. He's got an attorney working for him, he's collectively trying to do the right thing, he's working with the Homeowner Association. I think they've got some things that they're agreeing on and continuing to work on, the private party aspect of it. But in regards to the application, I think if you look at the zoning being R1, you look at the use and the traffic meeting subdivision regulations, it all makes sense and it all works as per your subdivision regulations.
It's a good argument, but I think that you probably ought to take a chapter out of our chairman's playbook and what he accomplished in Heritage Hills long ago about stopping traffic. That's history, long ago history. Well, but you did. I mean, it was really, you had a racetrack going through, and Commissioner Yocel, but, you know, stop signs were put up, different diversions, streets were closed, I mean, different things happened. If you would do something like that to alleviate what is going to be a really, I think, in rush hour and coming home, back that traffic along that one street, everything coming out of this one and everything from the, from the, from the middle of that subdivision down, they'll go out maybe the north half, but the existing one, you're just, it just appears to me on this, irrespective of it complying or not complying, it looks like it's a problem just waiting to happen. So the encouragement is, is the box that's not yours, you know, whether you abide or not, but can you get an easement from these guys to put a, you know, the road goes that way? And so that's another, that's the way out of his place, or the southern part. Try to get an easement, something like that, that there's, there's a street that you can build to connect MacArthur with the southern part of this subdivision.
Understood.
I've got a problem with it.
And again, like you say, not saying that we won't attempt to, but obviously, we don't have control of the rights of that piece of property, and there's no assurance that we can get rights to it, so.
Well, with one entrance on North MacArthur and one entrance on one hundred and sixty-fourth street, it doesn't matter what you do internally in terms of traffic flow, because you're still going to try and get in and out at those two points.
A, an entrance south to MacArthur, south of one hundred and sixtieth street, be it that by Bob's suggestion of a, of some type of, buy a, just a, a track for a street, extend one hundred and fifty-ninth court out, or buy a strip from them on the south end of their property, extend one hundred and fifty-eighth street out, whatever would mitigate some of that. This plat is designed, if you look at it, with a stub out of, out of here going north into the undeveloped land, and it's- undeveloped land, and a stub coming south into the undeveloped land. The land to the south will, I think, probably develop at some time fairly soon. The land to the north, that's pretty tough land to develop. It's pretty rough land. There's a big drawl goes through there. I doubt it's going to be developed anytime soon. So, there's not going to be any relief to the north here for a long time, if any, and it's questionable to the south. In the meantime, we're adding all these homes all at once. I say all at once, obviously, it'll take time to build it out, but we're adding all these with a single entrance, which is really problematic.
With respect to the development of property to the south, one of the questions that I had was whether one stub to the south is really enough. You know, this piece of property and its traffic circulation is so problematic, but one, you know, possible alleviation of that would be if there were other ways out. Currently, this shows only one stub to the south. Would it be possible to add another?
We can do that, yes.
I think that would be something to look forward to anyway.
I'm not following that.
Well, I agree with you, I agree with you on that, Janice, because more than likely, what's developed to the south, you're going to actually be sending all that traffic into another dense area unless we can get something out to MacArthur or out to 164th. You know, that's, I don't see any real-
I'm struggling just a little bit, Fall. I do understand the situation in the sense that it's existing, but if you look at it from an overall perspective of what was, if I come in and there was nothing you all would approve based upon access, this site right here today, because it meets your code. It has internal circulation, it's got access back out to MacArthur, it's got access up to 164th. It meets your code in every way. The only thing that's an oddity about it is the fact that Section One was built and the developer at the time didn't get noticed, didn't have the wisdom, whatever, to extend the preliminary plat. So, now we're back in with a new preliminary plat.
But exactly. That gives us a second bite at the apple-
But it still meets your subdivision-
...to correct something we may have done wrong the first time.
Well, just because, I understand that, Kendall. It meets it, but what you're doing is creating, it's creating a problem too by, you know, even the meeting of it. You know, it's really not stopping. That's like the letter of the intent.
Well, I guess, and I do appreciate the concern, but if something that doesn't meet your subdivision regulations is not acceptable, then I'm not sure where that puts us in terms of designing anything. And I do understand that there's the oddity and the unique application at times, but if you look at this thing from an overall community, it meets your access requirements. The boulevard was designed to be a boulevard and the collector was designed to be a collector for this purpose.
That's not the point, that's not the-
No question, except, you say that, the boulevard's design book and whatever it is, Still Meadows Drive is designed as a collector.
Right. For 376 lots.
I understand. Where's the big boulevard and the big collectors going through this new phase?
You're in the back. I mean, we've got the traffic on the-
You're still moving more than half the lots out.
I mean, it still feeds into the collector and the boulevard, so it still functions the way that the overall preliminary was designed to do in order to handle the traffic for 376 lots, of which now we have 309.
Still Meadows going to continue to be a collector to the south?
Yes, we'll keep that a collector through. Because you're, right.
Well, I can understand your frustration. I don't think that we're unsympathetic. It's just that it's a difficult piece of property and it, you know, it really is, I guess, that we're just struggling. This is, this is a lot of cars to put on the street. And I get that it was designed in terms of being a collector and being a boulevard to handle it, but, I mean, I don't think there's any question that at peak times, it's going to be difficult to get out onto MacArthur and that it is going to back up. I mean, there's just, I just, I just don't see how it's not. I think that if Still Meadows is also going to be developed as a collector, if that's going to continue, that will help. I think if we can put another stub to the south, then we at least have some future hope of alleviation in that direction, but, I mean, it's just a difficult piece of property.
Yeah, it's just hard for us to look at a site and realize what's imposed on the property owners when they get there. And it's not just the existing property owners who are already experiencing some difficulty getting in and out, but I look at adding the additional lots and I just know that those people, once they're in there, are going to be unhappy with their ability to get in and out of the neighborhood, and that's just a given. And there's nothing I can do about it, but I know that it's going to happen.
And I appreciate that concern, but I still am struggling a little bit in terms of the difficulty of getting in and out compared to the majority of subdivisions which we design and build that are, I'm not saying that it would be exactly like this and it couldn't be improved some, but in similar fashion. And once again, it meets the code, and I keep going back to the fact of the thing that this, originally, when we looked at the thing as a whole, we'd come in with 376 lots. And that was taken into consideration on how the traffic flows and everything else. There was no other entrance. It still had the same entrances that we're looking at here today. And not only do we still have the same basic traffic pattern, but now we're coming in with 67 less lots. So, to me, I'm struggling, obviously, to see what the concern is. I do understand that there's existing people there and there's people that live on a boulevard that's a primary access into the neighborhood. I understand that, we're concerned, but obviously, when you buy a house on the boulevard or on a collector, those streets are designed to handle and be the front door into the neighborhood. And so, to me, the thing, it meets the code. We've got less lots than the previous preliminary plat. I'm not sure what else. We'll do the stub to the south. But outside of that, I'm not sure what other alternative we have.
There was mention of a construction entrance.
Right.
Where is that going to be?
I think at the end of 159th Street is where I think Mr. Born has agreed to put the construction entrance.
That's 159th Court?
Right.
And I don't know that that meets the separation from 160th Street.
It would not in terms of the street, but now for construction-
No, no, I understand, but yeah, I would, it looked too close to-
Right.
Commissioners, I think we need to take action on this, one way or another. I'd like a motion.
I have one last comment.
Briefly. Come to the microphone if you would, so that we have a record of what you're saying.
Our neighborhood is still in the process of working through the covenants. I mean, like I said, not everyone in the neighborhood is in agreement with what's going on with the covenants. Not that that matters today, but I don't have a problem with him building in our neighborhood. Someone's going to do it eventually, and I am with you. This expired in 2007. There's no reason to take what was a bad development and make it worse. This is going to get some kid ran over. It's going to cause a lot of his people who live in that neighborhood to be more frustrated along with the people who already live there. Yeah, I know, I live on that street. I see it every day. I can't help that. But when it comes down to it, trying to work out some type of easement, that land that's underneath, off of MacArthur, there's a lot of open space there. My parents live out in Piedmont, Oklahoma, and they had to do an easement for a waterline that cut down a ton of their trees and they still did it. They didn't want it, but it was the right thing to do. Ended up having to do it for utility-wise. They could do something out that backside, too. I just think there's room to alleviate the pressure out of these neighborhoods and prevent what I'm calling is going to be like road rage on that street and a potential for a kid to get killed. That's all I got.
The fact that it's zoned R1 means we really can't prevent them from doing even denser development without asking us. So, we're better off doing something that lessens that even somewhat. So, that's our dilemma as commissioners today.
I think Kendall made a good point. If he brought this to, there were no homes there today in Phase One, and he brought this to us today with, including both phases, we would approve this. And I totally understand the concerns. I've lived in it, I've had a home on a street just like this before. I totally understand it, but I also knew what I was getting whenever I bought it. And, you know, I think that if anything, Kendall, that the proposed development is actually, has less of an impact on the traffic than what was originally approved. So, I'm going to make a motion to approve this and vote on it.
I'll go ahead and second that motion. I do think you can improve this plat. I don't know what your timetable is to get started, get the final plat, get it built, but I would encourage you in that time period, whatever that is, before we see a final plat, to see if you can work out some way to mitigate this deal to the west. If the church owns the land, they may want a street through there so they could have a street on one side of their land. I don't know, I'm not speaking for them. I'm making this up as I go, but I see some possibilities there. I would encourage you to investigate those very seriously because, you know, I agree with you, Kendall. It meets the subregs. We approved it before. I'm not sure it's such a good thing. I think it can be improved and I wish you'd make every effort to improve it.
Understood.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Commissioners, cast your votes, and it is approved.
Thank you.
Five to two. Item 20 is C 6316 is the final plat of La Sonata addition in Ward Eight.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Chris Anderson with SNC Engineering representing the developer. I have read the staff report and agree with all the TEs and just request approval of the plat this afternoon.
Oh, 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 excuse me, wait, wait, wait. Do we need to add a TE to that last one to include another stub to the south?
I'm sorry, do what?
Do we need to add another TE to the last one?
To include another stub to the south, since they agreed to do that. Do we need to make our motion condition on that? I'm not so much on the procedure.
And frankly, that's going to be a while till it's developed. I don't know how much it would help, but they agreed to it, so maybe that requires a reconsideration or whatever.
Mr. Chairman, do we need to reconsider to add a TE to include a second stub to the south?
The African?
Well, they've agreed to it.
Okay, well, in that case, you're agreeable to that, Kendall, to the second stub to the south?
Does it have to be part of the motion, I guess, is my question?
Did you already vote on it?
Get the rescind.
Yeah, so we need to-
You need to rescind your previous-
And move reconsider previous vote.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to rescind the previous vote on item 19. Cast your votes, and that's approved. And now you want to amend?
I want to move approval, adding a TE to include a second stub to the south.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second as conditioned. Item 19, cast your votes, and it now includes a second stub to the south. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Second, item 20. Chris, I missed, you're agreeable with the TEs?
Yes, sir.
Okay. No one signed up, Commissioners? We have a motion and a second to approve item 20. Cast your votes. That's approved. Bob, you're not vote? Bob's not here, okay.
Item 21 has been continued. Item 22 is S P U D 637, application by Colony Point Investors to rezone 13420 Piedmont Road from P U D 1147 to S P U D 637. I would suggest that we hear 22 and 23 together and you vote on them separately, but it's the same issue with each one.
Okay. I'm Roden Bird, developer of Colony Point, address 2315 Northwest 56th Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73112. Came in last week, or last month, and so we set this for continuance and recommendations from you all to narrow down basically our signage, square footage. I sent exhibits over to everyone and I'm hoping everyone got a chance to review early enough this time. Do you guys have anything in front of you right now? Because I've got a copy for everybody. So, you just have that, that's the only site?
Yeah, is there anything else?
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and hand these out to you if you guys don't mind.
No, go ahead.
pointed out before. Well, what we did is I just, this is define the square footage where I committed to lowering the existing 20-foot monument signs on the development to 12-foot as your two anchor signs, and as, and they are depicted on Exhibit D of your packet where those signs will be And then if you go back to the Exhibit C, this also, so it defines the actual height and width and then kind of defines the materials and base, you know, of the base and actually of the cabinet that we'll be using. Pretty much-
The question I asked Mr. Massey when I got this emailed to me this morning was, of the four examples, which one are you picking?
Well, he had told me that and I was hoping, you know, I'm going to be drawing up ECR for this development, which is easement, covenants and restrictions, along with minimum design standards for this development. So, there's going to cover, everything you see here will be in those minimum design standards, but I was hoping for a little leeway, at least on the monument. You know, plus, in my mind, it kind of gives just a little, I mean, as long as we're following the size guidelines, it kind of gives just a hair of character instead of it being just so uniformed out there. So, as long as I'm following the brick base and the look and the design and following those design standards where everything's going to be done in an eloquent manner, I was hoping to kind of get a little bit of just, like I said, just a little bit of character involved in the development to kind of have maybe a hair of different designs on those monument signs.
I was actually looking for a uniform design which would say to me that this is all part of a larger development, and I would understand that looking at the signs. And so, that was what I was asking Mr. Massey for.
The two anchor signs, of course, are going to be uniformed.
Well, I'm talking about the monument signs because I was wanting them, I mean, basically pick a design and go with it, and I, from the four, I don't have a choice or preference, but I was wanting to see uniformity in the sign design and material, except for the message contained in the sign, which would obviously refer to the individual uses.
I would think that you would want that, but I don't necessarily agree that the uniformity throughout the whole thing is something that I would, you know, be adamant about, that a couple of designs for Piedmont and another design for the Northwest Expressway, you know, just have along there, and then you have two choices. That's really what I think I'd like to see. But let me- But let me, let me make an editorial. I, I, I very much appreciate the reduction down of the, the non-accessory monument sign, the tenant sign, you know, that size and the, the architecture of it and what you're doing. And therefore, I don't really mind five eight-foot monument signs being put on Northwest Expressway and Piedmont. But I would think that you would, you should need, you need to do two designs, one's for that side and one's for the Northwest Expressway side.
Well, I, I can tell you right offhand, if I had to live with one, I would say the first one's gonna be the one we're gonna...
Well, and I, I agree with Commissioner Bright. I mean, you have visual continuity on Piedmont, you have different visual continuity on Northwest Highway. Village Verde to the southeast of you is going to have a uniform sign all along Northwest Expressway. The only difference being the mess, the message within. So, as, as they can construct their signs, that's what you're gonna see.
If, if you guys just, just quickly would look at, uh, oh, the color rendering site plan that was put together in the packet, it's just where it's, where it shows retail, retail and you kind of have not included on the corner, and then it has the existing residential on that plan. If you look at, to the, to the east, that little white lot that says Colony Point Retail Center that's already existing out there, I don't know how many of you guys have driven out there to, to see this development, but that, that's an existing center out there that's basically, without our choice, is gonna be represented as part of our development anyway, kind of, or at least perceived that way. And their signs are not gonna match ours. Probably, and I don't have, I do not have what their sign approval, the actual look of it is, but I know they're approved for a sixty-foot sign there, which is completely, you know, I only had two twenty-foots. They have two and a half acres there and they've got a sixty-foot sign that was approved within this last year. And then they also have another twenty-foot monument sign, but I don't know what it's, the actual look of it's gonna be like, but it's probably not as nice as what I'm putting out.
They're, they're gonna be visited because their signs are not, uh, what was approved. I mean, we're gonna have a little disconnect for that one little spot, but you've got a great deal more property in both directions. Village Verde has a lot more.
Well, I appreciate you guys recognizing that I'm putting together the good development here and trying to work with me, so that's what I'm trying to do.
And we're, we're encouraging that and we understand, uh, the desire for the monument signs and certainly want you to have them, for obvious reasons.
I did have one concern, I, I did need to address this with you and, uh, you know, the McDonald's deal that I came in for a variance for a couple of months back and got on the pole sign. That deal is not completed yet, or, you know, it's not done yet, obviously. If that deal were to somehow fall out, I've come in here without a monument sign depicted on that lot. And, and my point is, is if McDonald's did fall out, then I've got one lot here that does not have a monument sign approved because I had traded that off for you guys for the variance on that, on the pole on the corner for McDonald's. And my, I'm just, you know, nothing's ever done, especially in today's world right now, until it's done. So if something were to happen in that manner, what would be your suggestion? Because obviously, if the new tenant couldn't, couldn't achieve the variance that McDonald's was approved for, so I'd have to come back in for a renew up on the...
You'd have no problem getting one more monument sign for that site, giving up the pole sign.
Okay, so I would just have to come in, recome, re, re, okay. Okay? Any, so do you guys want me, are you, so you, I'll tell you that, I will, I will, I don't, I would do, I will work on two sign, two monument signs, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, so you just pick the ones you want for Piedmont, the ones you want for Northwest Highway and we're happy.
Okay. I could tell you the first one's definitely one of them, I don't know of the other three.
Well, don't care.
Okay.
We're not, we're not trying to design them for you, except to ask for some uniform presentation.
Okay.
Moving approval of the application, right?
Uh, yes, with the condition that, uh, he can take, pick up two sign designs, one for Piedmont Road, one for Northwest Highway, and they're uniform on each road.
And the two is, and that's the condition, that the two anchors are, are like I've got depicted here, so they're gonna obviously be different.
Yeah, they're fine.
Okay.
They're fine. And on that basis, I approve the application with those conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Bright.
Question?
I'm just gonna do one after the other.
Your motion needs to include deletion of the TE.
So, I'm sorry?
One, one TE and your motion needs to include the deletion of that on both applications. It was for all eight foot...
All right, so we...
That modifies TE number one. Right.
Okay, we have two applications, one for each of the roads, so we need to address them separately. So we need a motion to approve item twenty-two first.
That was my motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item twenty-two as conditioned. Cast your votes. And that's approved. Item twenty-three?
Uh, the, the, approve the application with the revision in TE one.
Deleting TE one and changing it.
And changing it.
Single sign, okay. Cast your votes and you're approved. Thank you for working with us.
Thank you all.
That was good.
Have good holidays.
Item twenty-four is SPUD six thirty-one, application by James Vonham and Amy Young to rezone six twelve to six eighteen Northwest Twenty-Ninth Street from Neighborhood Conservation Historic Landmark District to SPUD six thirty-one in Wood Two.
Give us your name for the record, please, and address.
Uh, James Vonham, I'm applicant and I guess co-owner at six twelve Northwest Twenty-Ninth Street.
Okay. I understand you have approval of the HP Commission yesterday, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
I, this is gonna be such a cool thing. I've been there and I've walked through it and looked at it and it's gonna, it's just gonna be really cool. The one question I had of you that we didn't get a chance to visit about was the language in the, um, staff report regarding the use, and it appears two different places, under, one under food and beverage retail sales and one retail sales and services. Is it, is it there? Yeah. It talks about small convenience grocery stores are not permitted, are not permitted. These are small, okay, I'm gonna, I gotta answer my question. What, what, it seemed to me to be saying, you couldn't have a seven-eleven, but you could have some other kind of small convenience grocery store. But it's just saying, no small convenience grocery stores, period, right?
I think that's what it's saying, yeah.
Help me out here, fellas. Um, under food and beverage retail sales, it says, "A convenience store will not be permitted. These are small grocery stores serving the market area no larger than the immediate neighborhood generating a high level of quick turnover traffic, open after ten in the evening." And what I was saying, what I was reading that initially to say was that, couldn't have a seven-eleven, but you could have a small grocery store serving the market area, but it, but it's not. That's just a description of what a small, okay. Never mind. This is gonna be such a cool thing. Um, it's gonna be, you know, sort of a, of a, a real addition to the area, I think, and I'm gonna move approval.
Sorry. Russell, did you have something you wanted to say? Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve item twenty-four. Cast your votes. And you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item twenty-five is SPUD six forty-four, an application by Mahesnaayak to rezone twenty-nine oh three to twenty-nine oh nine Northwest Seventieth Street from PUD five eighty-four to SPUD six forty-four, Wood Two.
Good afternoon. My name is Mahesnaayak. I am going to represent the application for Spud six forty-four. I am here fourth time for the same property. Since two thousand and five, as there is not adequate uses for this Spud, so I humbly and sincerely request you all, please accept all C three, community commercial uses. Then I'm going to go with the history. I have purchased that lot in two thousand and five for the good intention, okay, I, I will do, it can help me on my retirement. But this property has not been rented since two thousand and seven, January. I've been paying from borrowing from the bank and help from my family members. Fortunately, present time, it happened because I was keeping one store, keep going myself, I was running the pickup store there, dry cleaning pickup store, and somebody saw some signage and say there is, this is the ideal location for doggy daycare and dog grooming and all that. So, fortunately, Knight family rented that place from me at the lowest possible rank for the brand-new property. And she has asked for lots of expense inside to develop in, according to her business. And we were under impression that the use is sufficient because it, it has says in that previous Spud, animal sales and service. And there was a fine line, they were dog, okay, grooming. So, I was under impression that whatever we are talking about, animal sales and service is acceptable. So service means is a broad word, but there are some fine line, okay, the, the zoning is not sufficient. So, now I am in the situation, the Knight family is putting lots of pressure on me. She has hired the attorney and she's keep writing me a letter. So it is, is a very tense situation for me. And the other thing for that property, because it is for marketability in the future, if this tenant does, eh, might be say goodbye to me, then I wanted, that's why possible all use to be approved. And the building is not on the right on the main road like a May Avenue or like that. It is over hundred feet from the, uh, May Avenue and there are lots of big buildings around that area because there is a Lakewood Center on the north side and the south side there are Den Depot and the Cigar and Company and all that, because this is on the Seventy Street, it's not right on the May Avenue. And there are lots of signage and lots of trucks are parked on the front of the May Avenue. So nobody is seeing that property because city has a restriction when they approve the previous zoning, okay, you cannot build over sixteen feet. So, the other thing I'm requesting is a forty-foot pole sign, which is allowed in the city I am sure city official wants small business to grow, so they provide employment for the benefit of the city and the surrounding area. City does not want, I'm sure city does not want someone file bankruptcy and, and other people also suffer. Because of, I, I was not able to rent that property, my family has suffered tremendously. Previously, free zoning was done by others. I have to hire the attorneys and they have charged me enough money, but still it did not help me and solve my problem, rental problem. And whenever I have, I have keep going with my small business there, even though I was losing the business, because if I abandoned the property, even though I was rent, I was using that property, there were, some people were sleeping at the backside of the building and they were writing, eh, like a gangs member, that kind of people, and they were putting lots of stress there. So, I am humbly and sincerely request, eh, my application, would you please approve it?
You originally had six uses approved for this site, is that correct?
Yeah, they were very little and I think, I think it's my ignorance has also caused that problem. If I was smart enough, I should have said to that attorney who charged me eight thousand dollars with his fees and, and I think he didn't do the job, I think, because sometime ignorancy does affects that kind of thing.
Well, in two thousand and ten, though, you came back and increased the number of uses from six to twenty-one.
Right, definitely, it did, yeah. That helps me, that's why this helped me to this tenant came, because she saw the animal sales and services, but there was a two dots, I think, that we were misinterpreted by that dots. And then stayed grooming. And I think animals and sales and services, there are four categories, I think, uh, I'm sure JJ must be knowing, I think. So, we were approved for particularly, I think, one kind of animal sales and service and I think we did not have, have a knowledge, as well as my realtor did not have a knowledge. And I am sure realtor maybe, they will be paid their commission if he rented house. So at the end, I have to go through all this.
Well, part of your property immediately to the west is adjacent to a residence. Another part of your property to the north on the...
There is no residence, there is a commercial property all, all the way. On the north side commercial, the south is commercial, only there is a west side few homes, I think.
The west half of your property abuts somebody's backyard.
Uh...
I mean, you're looking at the same map above me, my head, that I'm looking at on the screen here.
Uh, the way we build a building, the, our architect, they brought more on the towards, uh, west side. So I think, no, east side, sorry. So it, it created quite a bit distance between my building and there is a full wall, there is no doors on that side on the west side. So, and there is quite a bit insulation and is there. So there is a pretty good separation and a big fence is there, eight-foot fence is there on that side. And the house is, I think, at least sixty to seventy feet far from that particular, the last wall.
That's true, that's true on the north.
Uh, north side is also quite a bit distance because we have put the fence and the house is still there, also fifty, sixty feet distance is there. And I have seen this same kind of businesses, ten feet away from the house. In the Robinson and Twenty-Third, there is a dog, daycare, dog grooming and dog, everything is not even ten feet away from the actual... So this is a very ideal and there is a, quite a bit, this is a big building, like four thousand square feet, so absolutely there is not a little bit noise going out of the building.
Well, I don't see how you're gonna get all the C three uses at that location and I know you're not gonna get a...
I'm sure I will work with my Wood Two, Janice Howard, I think I will sit down with her and we will go with her, I think, whatever. But I wanted the most because this tenant, I don't think it might not work out. So I have to have in future something in place because I don't want to keep coming here and I asking all the time something, this time we want this, this time we want... That's enough expense and I am out of half a million dollar and I'm just not a wealthy person.
So are you saying you'd like to sit down with Commissioner Powers?
Yes, I will sit down with him.
Between now and our next meeting? Janice?
And I'm sure JJ and Lance also knows my situation. I have visited them, I think, at least ten times, fifteen times. With the difficult parking in the city, right now the construction is going on, I think I have, I have really burnt out on this particular...
If what Mr. Knight is requesting is a continuance...
This one, kind of...
So that we can have an opportunity to sit down and discuss the uses and the signage and so forth, I would certainly be most agreeable to that.
Well, let me make kind of an editorial comment about dog daycare. I have two dogs that I take to a dog grooming, dog daycare. And in those dog daycare places, dogs bark and they bark loud and loud and loud and you're right next door to a residential neighborhood. I have trouble with that particular use. I have significant troubles with you trying to put all the C three uses that you have. And then I also have trouble by allowing an illegal forty-foot sign to be retained. Just so you'll know where, where my position is when you talk with Commissioner Powers and with JJ.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A motion to continue this to January 12th?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue item 25 to January 12th. Cast your votes and that's approved. We'll see you on January 12th.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, but I have to leave. Has Commissioner Gales gone and can you go on without me?
There's a lot of paper over there, so he may be back.
Okay.
Here he is.
Okay. I apologize for jacking out, but I've got someplace I've got to be. Happy holidays.
Me too, but I'll stay.
And send to you, Janice.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, happy holidays and a happy new year.
Item 26 is SP 444, the Patient Quail Ridge Hunting Association here for a special permit to operate a participant recreation and entertainment outdoor use in AA agricultural and airport overlay at 7632 Southeast 149th Street in Ward 4.
For those of you still here, thank you for your patience. It's been a long day for you out there, I'm sure. Your name and address, please.
Yes, sir, David Martin, 3109 Oak Brook Drive, Dell City. I currently own Quail Ridge Hunting Association located in Tecumseh, Oklahoma. We have a 360-acre ranch where we do upland bird hunting and then sporting clays. My proposal to Councilman White, we've been working for about two and a half years, is that I was looking for a location to move our sporting clay facility closer to the city. Sporting clays is a game like golf with a shotgun. We have distinctive trails where people walk on and distinctive shots that they make upon the clay targets. But as you said, there's only two in the state that are open to public, one is up in Guthrie and then myself down in Tecumseh. Moving it closer would be, because sometimes it only takes like an hour to go through the course. It's a shorter, much more, what I want to say, speedy sport than golf is. So we have a lot of customers that do like that, being out in Tecumseh from the city, our major client bases in the city. So we've been working on this for two and a half years and we've gotten to this point where a piece of abandoned property came due under the Water Trust, which is kind of fits right into the draper, the grand recreational idea that the city has for that area. We've agreed on a piece of property where it would benefit us for proximity and then the main, another deal was for reclaiming the lead and E.P.A. environmental. So we have met all that criteria and now we're just coming before you for the special use permit to where we can operate this facility with shooting shotguns only during daylight hours at this location. By the way, we are taking as an abandoned, just trashed-out piece of property. We've cleaned up a lot already. We're going to remodel the existing home and make it into an office and add a pavilion and then our trails.
And you have a big thick lease with the Water Trust to do all this?
About it, I believe. Lisa and I did about 70-some pages of that, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, no questions or protest, I move approval of the application.
No one has signed up. So we have a motion and a second to approve item 26. Cast your votes and you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item 27 is ED 199, an application by First Enterprise Bank to dedicate private streets within Bella Ranch Phase 1 Edition, Ward 4.
Good night and good evening. Thanks for hanging around for this. This is a subdivision we did back in 2009. Quite frankly, if we were back in 2009 and we came to you with this as public streets, I'm sure you wouldn't argue with me that that would be okay to have public streets. It was chosen to do private streets at the time because this was a heavily wooded area. It's very steep in its slopes and to build a rural section in this RA zone property, it would require concrete bar ditches because if the slope exceeds a certain percentage, the Public Works Department requires a concrete bottom on the bar ditches. So it was cheaper for us to come in and do a rolled curb section with inlets and storm sewer, which is what was done, that's what was constructed. Plans were approved and went through the whole city process. Plans were approved, reviewed by the staff, drainage and everything. An inspection fee was paid by the developer. The development was, the paving was put in according to city standards, was reviewed and inspected. As built were submitted to the staff in March of 2009. So what's been built out there meets everything that the city would have required, with the exception of, at that particular period of time, the rolled curb section was not an approved section. And other than that, the paving thickness and everything meets the RA zoning. So we have been working with the staff. The reason I took a continuance last time was because there was a question that came up regarding the sidewalks, saying that none of the sidewalks could meet ADA requirements because everything's so steep. Well, sidewalks are not required in the RA and there's not a sidewalk out there. And so we confirmed that, we met with the staff, and then we've had additional conversations with Mr. Agrewall and his staff with regard to the pieces and parts that'll need to be put together before this goes to council, which includes a maintenance bond by the contractor, which the bank will have to get. And all the testing has already been done, as I mentioned earlier, everything was done according to city inspectors as they were paid an inspection fee to monitor this. So we do agree with all the TEs. TE number three is a conditional approval based on the items I just mentioned. And unless those things are brought forward to the staff, it won't go to council. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Tim, something's occurred to me since you were here last and we've heard a couple of these cases from time to time. I'm just scratching my head and wondering why the city would want to take streets back it does not now have responsibility for when we can't maintain the streets we already have, the thousands and thousands of miles of them.
I think the same argument could be made today on any of the plaits that you looked at and approved. You didn't make any argument with regard to the city doesn't want to take any more streets for maintenance. These are property-
I understand, but I mean, we're looking at a set of streets here where we don't now have responsibility. And I also understand that when you came in to apply for this project in the first place, if you were asking for public streets, we would have said nothing about it.
The next conditions have changed. You know, this is, we fell through some hard times. This developer went bankrupt, the bank took this property back and owns all but those shaded four or five lots that you see there. And so the bank wanting to market this.
So we're helping the bank out?
Yeah, I think it's time to help the bank out.
You think?
They've helped us out so many times now.
Yeah, right.
Are they parcels?
Uh-huh.
They're, they're in favor of this?
Yes, they are. And that's part of the requirement. We'll have to get their sign off for the plat before it comes to council. Yeah, they're supporting that.
But they, you've already done that or-
The bank has already spoken with them before we made the application.
I just would like to see a policy discussion kicked off between us and council as to what really makes sense for the city to continue to do in terms of its fiscal responsibility and financial resources.
I might, just a brief response to that is, in the many subcommittee meetings that we've sat in, sat through and discussed these street items, one of the main reasons that we went several years ago to the approved private street plans and the inspection fees was to provide that if the city ever got in a position they had to take these things back, they want to make sure they're being built correctly.
Had to, as opposed to choice, chooses to.
Well, that's-
And I understand, and I understand that the conditions have been met in terms of what's in place, that it would be what we would require today, except for the change you said about the rolled curves. Just strikes me as odd that the city does this time, you know, is willing to do it. I'm not, just for purpose of discussion, but go ahead.
I agree with you, Mr. Chairman. But as a matter of practice, you know, we do this and probably should. With that, I'm going to make two comments. One, I'm going to move approval of the application and I'm also going to note for the record, the address for bank bailouts is 1600 Pennsylvania Avenue, Washington, DC.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 27. Cast your votes. Doesn't pass.
So is it automatically continued?
Automatically continued.
Somebody wants to make another motion?
All right, okay. Somebody want to make another motion? No?
Continue to January 12th.
January 12th.
Thank you.
Sorry you sat here so long for that, Tim.
Tim, in the meantime, you might write that letter.
All right, last item, 28, SPD 642, an application by the Ramsey Family Trust to rezone 5501 South Shields from PUD 1269 to SPD 642 in Ward 4.
Dean Dye is here to represent the Ramsey Family Trust application for this spud, 5501 Would like to answer any questions you might have about it. I do want to discuss the TEs with you, but the application, I mean, the report here's fine.
So what TEs do you want to discuss?
Well, in 2000, yeah, in 2008, I came before this commission with a PUD, 1269, I believe is the number on it. And we had an existing pole sign on that property, it'd been there for a number of years. And we agreed to leave that pole sign in that PUD. We also agreed that if any new signs were to be built, they would be eight-foot monument signs. And we also agreed not to do any of the small accessory signs. So therefore, we'd like to keep, on TE number one, talks about the existing pole sign and we'd like to keep that existing pole sign. I did visit with Mr. Allen and some other representatives about it and they seem to feel like that maybe that might be possible. The other thing that they've got on TEs is the green belt. We've discussed with several people that they'd like to see that green belt be on the north property line. If you're looking at this map here, that front box there where this SPD is, is only 150 foot deep. It's 250 foot across the frontage, but it's only 150 foot deep. We were in agreement to do the green belt on the north property line on this side of the fence, along with the bushes and trees, all the way back to that point there and also could be considered as a buffer, you know, between this property and the school. So it actually would go beyond that. Instead of having the-
The appearance corridor, though, is Shields Boulevard, not the property line of the school.
Well, but that's what I'm thinking. What kind of landscaping are you, you know, Shields is Shields, okay? Why waste, and I'm putting that in quotes, why waste your landscaping on Shields when you could do some good with it on the north side?
That's basically what they said.
So you'd carry the landscaping on the north side how far to the west?
Back to that point there, you know, I don't, right above, see where it says PUD 1269?
Right.
Up in that northwest corner right there. All along there is the buffer for that parking lot there for the school.
I can understand that.
We were talking about doing trees, I think, on 20-foot centers and also bushes in between. And then that front area there where that 150-foot depth is, that was going to be numerous bushes, kind of like it is already on the north side where the school is. It's what they suggested.
And here's my observation about that. I encourage that a lot. I like it. You know exactly what you're talking about. The pole sign that's there, and as Commissioner Gales knows, Shields is Shields. It is rampant with other pole signs. And I think that if you took it down and had a nice monument sign with whatever else you're doing on that car, it's a car lot, right?
Yes, sir.
You're going to have flags flying and different little, you know, you'll have a lot of attention to that car lot because that's what car lots do. I don't think you need the pole sign. I think you need a monument sign with the landscaping and for better or worse, you're going to make that little piece of property really nice and compatible with this southeast high school. I mean, you've got, you've got a chance to improve what, as Commissioner Gales says, Shields is because it had no controls whatsoever to do, you know, 50-foot pole signs and whatever you wanted to do along Shields. It is an appearance corridor and it goes from there into town, you know. So I really, I think that you've got to comply with the TEs other than the landscape buffer and put that on the north side.
Oh, the, now, sir, I'm sorry, say that one more time, sir?
Just take down the pole sign, leave it on the sign.
They don't want to do away with that pole, Commissioner Bright, they don't, they're not wanting to do away with that.
I understand. But you've got a trade-off, don't you?
Well?
And if you, I mean, if you want to rezone the site, what Commissioner Bright is saying is the trade-off is the pole sign goes away. Otherwise, the car lot apparently is not an approved use there.
Why didn't we approve it once before? Why would we take it away now?
Did I?
Yes, sir, you certainly did. In fact, I remember visiting with you directly about it.
Well, I must have been, I must have been asleep. I must have been asleep. I just, you know, the thing is, if we can improve, you don't need it, you really don't need it. I mean, you're going to have a very visible and a nice sign with landscaping, et cetera, and I think you'll stand out among those other businesses on Shields and be a really attractive place to come in and buy your car.
There are four other car lots that are almost in the same vicinity as where this location is. They all have their pole sign.
That's because we don't have a competent sign ordinance working in this city. That's exactly the reason why that's there.
Well, I didn't really feel like it'd be a problem seeing as we'd approved it once before.
But you, but that's the TE that the staff imposed, no EMDs, eight-foot monument signs and it's consistent with the-
The staff told me the reason-
Well, it's consistent with our policy.
Yeah. But the staff told me the reason they put that on there was because, that they had to regardless because if you read the front of the application up here on page two, where we, at the time we made the application, we asked to leave the pole sign for it to stay.
That didn't-
In fact, it's in the staff's letter here.
Well, here, I mean, this is my, I have one opinion on this commission and that's my opinion. I think you need to take the pole sign down in order to put the car lot there. And I mean, I think you ought to comply with the TEs, except for the buffer along Shields and that buffer that you're putting along the north side, I agree with that. But that's, I'm only one person. And I've been outvoted a lot.
I don't have the authority to remove that pole sign.
Well, you might want to come back then because-
Well, so, so what you're saying is, you don't have the authority to remove the pole sign and you want a resolution today?
Well, naturally, I like that.
Is that what I'm hearing?
But, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Everything else can be approved without the pole sign, is what you're saying?
No, no, what I'm saying is, I'm about to make a motion to approve the application with the landscape addition that we talked about. And leaving the pole sign, okay? And we're going to vote on that and it's going to be a split vote. That will get you a continuance. Then we will make an alternative motion for denial. That could either be a split vote or it could be denied. If you want to take your denial then to council, you're out of here. If not, you come back. I'm really asking you your preference.
I don't want to have to come back. I don't wanna have to come back, that's for sure.
Okay. I'll move approval of the application, leaving the pole sign and amending the landscape to the north side as discussed.
To a second?
Couldn't get a second. So I'll make another motion, move to deny the application.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny the application. Cast your votes. It's denied.
So now you get to go to council and plead your case.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the public hearing session of the meeting. J.J. and Lance and Dan and Russell, thank the staff for working with us this year. We appreciate the support. You all do...
Happy holidays.
Same to you, yeah.
You all do a really good job and we appreciate all that you do. And happy holidays to everyone. Merry Christmas to those of you who celebrate Christmas and happy holidays to you who celebrate in any other fashion.
I'd like to also convey those sentiments to the director. I think you've done an extremely good job all year long.
I included Russell.
Did you say him?
Yes.
Well, I didn't hear that.
I didn't overlook him.
But the other thing I wanted to say is, is that...
He was last.
That the study session that you guys missed this morning was extraordinary. It needs, something like that needs to be repeated. I mean, everything was exactly what we're looking at to, you know, adopt with a comprehensive plan, neighborhood, all this, it was a very, very good study session.
Oh, I'm sorry I missed it.
Yeah.
Any other comments, commissioners? Anything from staff, J.J.? Municipal Counselor's Office? I would like to do a couple of things in staff reports going forward, one having to do with non-accessory signs, just to indicate that they are prohibited rather than this language about unless otherwise provided herein. And if somebody has a non-accessory sign request, let them make it specifically and make a case for it. We don't wanna go through that billboard situation up on Memorial again, for example. So that would, I think, simplify that. There was another thing in Dennis's application that I...
Communication Tower.
Yeah, Communication Towers, again, not allow people to write their P.U.D. statement saying, well, Communication Towers allowed a special use and blah, blah, all these different tracks. Let them come in with a specific request for them as opposed to, can we do that, Dan? Is that a problem?
No.
Again, it makes it a lot easier to deal with the issue later on. So those are two requests. If that's agreeable with the commission, I'm basically saying, we ask as a commission that those policies put into effect as we deal with applicants, as they come into staff.
General, J.J.'s doing that first review, so do you want to, I mean, I know we were all, you're already talking about doing the accessory sign stuff. Do you need anything else on the cellphone? Do you wanna adopt that as an official policy?
Well, it's not on our agenda to adopt now, but we would be...
Yeah, I know, but...
I mean, if you want a resolution on those issues, we can have those on the agenda on January twelfth.
Yeah, I can bring back a resolution with those two policies.
Well, do it that way and it's appropriately formal then. Russell, anything?
Well, just thanks for your comments, Bob, John. Doesn't seem like the end of the year yet, so I'm not in the mode yet. I've gotta do the panic on the couple of days before Christmas.
Yeah, I've got the same problem. Christmas comes around way too fast. It's once a year like clockwork.
And Bob had asked if I might hand out copies of the presentations this morning, so we'll get that to you and feel free to ask any questions if you would like at a later point. So I'm more than happy to fill you in on the rest of that. We do expect the Citizens Advisory Team for the Planning Commission to be, we're gonna go to the mayor here next week and get that finalized and then I'll give you an update on everything else in January.
Okay. And I talked to Dan for a few minutes and they're gonna work on a memo on cellphone applications and what, I mean, he's probably already ahead of me on this, but what I asked for was a present, a comment by the municipal counselor in every meeting where we have a cellphone case to tell us what the FCC rules are so we know what we can and can't do, what our limitations are, because we're probably talking a whole lot about issues we can't deal with or resolve. And I think it, if that sort of thing is read out, it also tells the public that's here exactly what the constraints are on us as well.
I was surprised about the FCC rule that came up with this application, what was environmental concerns? It can't be the basis for any design. We're doing a comprehensive memo for the commission and for the council because we've got a group of those cell towers that's gonna be coming up at the second meeting in January, I think, before the council. And so we're gonna prepare a conference. It's a kind of a difficult area, but we're gonna try to, you know, put a comprehensive memo that will explain exactly what to do and what to do with that. We've got a lot of...
Take a motion to adjourn, gentlemen?
Happy Christmas to everybody.
Merry Christmas to everybody.